All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Committee the Whole. It is time, as we mentioned a week ago, for our budget presentations. And so we will jump right into it. And I see we have Carrie and MJ ready to go, so take it away.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Tonight kicks off our department presentations. And I just want to encourage all of you, if you have any questions along the way, to ask this evening. If we can't answer it, we will definitely get back to either next meeting, both next meeting and in writing. So on deck today is going to be Equity Housing and Human Services, Parks and Recreation Executive and Municipal Court. And then next week, we are handling the rest of the departments, Public Works, Community and Economic Development, City Attorney, HR and Finance. So I am going to turn it over to MJ. Thank you, Carrie. Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. Thank you for letting EHS, sorry, sir.
Sorry to start you, so you're at the beginning.
No, the monitors are not working.
I was gonna say the same thing. Is there any way we can get these?
Or they're off or something is happening. Sorry.
What do you say?
Sorry. Me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
In the interest of time, well, I'm not gonna make Jason go, we'll wait. We probably need Jason back down there, anyway. But I think it was mentioned, and I'll just go ahead and while I'm filling time here, to follow up, say, obviously, if there are questions we don't get to today, I did hear correctly, obviously, there's play opportunity to follow up in writing afterwards, or if you think of something later, for certain, obviously, there will be the opportunity to do that. And then I was, as we saw, there's a pretty hefty amount of presentations to get through. So I don't, we don't at this point have a break scheduled, but I will, if you need to get up and excuse yourself quietly, please feel free to do so. Jason, oh. Did I almost buy enough time? I can keep talking. I actually can't, I have nothing else to say.
No break schedule, actually.
I have the sense of he feels the silence uncomfortable.
Here we go.
Hey, here we are. Thank you, Jason. Let's continue.
Okay. All right, we'll get into it then. Thank you. So this is Equity Housing and Human Services Department. My name is Mary Jane Van Cleve, and I'm the Administrator. What we wanted to start is framing the age of the department. We are one-year-old, we're a young department, we're still new, and we are certainly still establishing our role and purpose in order to best support the city's mission. We included the goal here that we feel that we support the best, which is to build an inclusive, informed, with equitable outcomes for all in support of social, economic and racial justice. So our department is definitely focused on this. The other thing I just wanted to comment on is, and it's just, I want to acknowledge my team. They're all here today, and they're amazing individuals, they're incredibly supportive. In a year's time, they have gone through either two or three departments, about three administrators. Several of them have moved their work, still did their work, and never complained, maybe on the side, but definitely not in person. But they've been incredibly graceful, they've accomplished a lot despite a lot of transition and change, and they have supported along the way because of the greater purpose and mission of the team. So thank you to my team, I really appreciate them. So we're gonna get into our budgetary ask. Thank you, Carrie and her team, to put this together. We're gonna highlight a few, but again, our budget is what it is because of its new inception and creation. Obviously, there was this huge bump, a lot of that had to do with COVID and one-time funding, but it is settling out at that 3.6, 3.7 for 23 and 24 years. In terms of our specific asks for the budget, we are looking at the following four. $250,000 to increase to our Human Services Funding Collaborative. That was that presentation we provided a few weeks ago. It goes specifically to that grant funding allocation that we provide, and we'll go into each one specifically. $100,000, that balance is currently at zero, that's the Housing Opportunity Fund. $45,000, this is to up our professional services line item, and we'll again go into detail. And then lastly, rounding out with our new Equity Manager position, which is new to the department and the city. This is our collaborative that we participate, this is the consortium. This is their funding within that. This isn't all of our Human Services funding, it's very just specific to that. But as you can see, we have been somewhat on the lower end in terms of the larger group of what we've been allocating out to the community. And with council's approval and the city's approval, we'll be upping it to $812,000 for '23 and '24. We have gone through our grant funding cycle, we have selected our service providers, and are anticipating of allocating every bit of that $812,000. Next is that Housing Opportunity Fund. Again, I'm still learning, so I apologize, I'm just a few months in and still getting the lay of the land. But this is basically $100,000, this is Housing Capital Fund Source. The city has this in order to help establish affordable homeownership. This, right now, is the only fund that we have that works effectively for homeownership, and our hope is to apply this $100,000 to support the second phase of Willow Crest. That will be upping the units from the 12 that there is now, and in Phase Two, it will be increased to 19. And our funding will support their larger effort in terms of acquiring funds in order to move to the second phase. This next one is, it's Professional Services. The reason we highlighted this is we are really constantly looking at our ways to stay trained, to stay informed, to make sure the best resources and data and services can be brought to the city. This was recommended by the team, and again, we're still being, building out our capacity. So there's times where we need this. It's a really small team, at most one or two people, if we're lucky, are assigned to a specific service area. So capacity is a challenge for the team, but it's certainly not a detriment to us. And so that's where Professional Services will help expand that. Next is the Equity Manager position. Benita's here with us in the room tonight as our consultant, but we really have a desire to build off of the legacy that she has provided us in terms of training and conversations. There's been a large amount of work to get us where we're at, but the goal here is to have this be provided by a city employee. And this is rooted based on things that have been discussed and identified by various departments, and also listening to council. There's been a lot of emphasis and expectation on us producing data and in well as our narratives. And so that's how this is going at the moment. If budget approved, we will look at filling this position early next year, but the job description is yet to be formally completed in partnership with HR. This is the department's highlighted accomplishments. I think they're pretty significant, again, considering the department is a little over-year-old. To move multiple service lines into one new department, build the structure, create the cadence and the culture and just the day-to-day and learning what we all do is work in itself, but it's been good work, it's rewarding. The next one is the accomplishment of really supporting with the 1590 funds is the $1.5 million to Sunset Gardens. Hannah Von Miller in the audience has been phenomenal at being a regional and local resource and championing our housing, and so that was great use of those funds. Creating the Equity Commission, that was no small feat. Linda and Benita did a huge amount of that heavy lift, we're really proud of that commission. A lot of phenomenal members with more to come, as we have some vacancies just due to the tenure of their assignments. But again, very excited. We will be moving forward with creating a docket, and I'll explain that later. Housing Repair, 148 homeowners were assisted. The team did a fantastic job, that they stretched their dollars, as I've learned what they've done, and with supply chains being disrupted during COVID, the fact that they could take care of 148 homeowners is pretty phenomenal. Their budget is quite small for what they do, so they are incredibly resourceful. The Community Outreach Coordinator, that's Chan T., he's in the audience as well. He comes with a really prestigious and amazing background, and he's been really applying a scholarly lens to what we do to bring up our reporting. But he's also been really active in engaging in the community. He's meeting with folks, we've had conversations today where the distrust lies, where we can build, and the emphasis and goal to build access. Already really great feedback and stories. The 2.1 million for COVID relief, that's one-time funding. The very small team of Guy Williams who's here, Diane Utter retired, but we got this amazing Lori. This amazing Lori, she's ours, it's just the Lori now. But they did this amazing lift of executing the distribution of 2.1 million on top of, again, transition and the contracts that we do within the consortium. Each contract was nearly two contracts in itself, one to provide the funding to the service providers and one with the federal government. So a lot of work to get important dollars out. And again, previously, in that last presentation I did, nearly 72%, almost 79% went to rental assistance. So important work. Then the Multicultural Festival, Benita can definitely wave her hand and know that that was a heavy lift. It's still beloved, it's still important to the community, it is a heavy lift. And so to bring it out of hiatus for two years, the team should be very proud. Again, a lot of movement and logistical work that goes on in the background. And so we will continue to put on a great event in any shape or form we can. The last is Remy King. So the Neighborhood Program is amazing. It has gone through several individuals and departments, and so it's now landed here. But Remy hit the ground running as well, and she was able to not only support the neighborhoods as they were interested to kind of make their way back into group settings and gatherings, but we also resurrected the staff liaison model that had been dormant for about five years. I mean, basically, when Norma left last. And so we're excited to see that model re-brought back. It's really important for the residents to have direct contact and names and individuals in relationship with city staff, so that's gonna support that. In terms of our goals, this is my goal to you and to our team and to our residents, but our goal is to create more analytics for our department so that we can really articulate who we're serving and therefore help identify who we're not serving and bridge those gaps. As well as, we have a lot of money moving in through our department, so our intent is to provide transparency and an easier way to consume how the money flows between our department. We are in the process of completing the Human Services Needs Assessment. We're essentially gonna segue to the second phase. The first phase really focused on the consortium and allocation of those funds. And now we're gonna be moving into where we can bridge the 2014 to present day. As Councilmember McIrvin, you had requested that, is really wanting to see the gaps. And so that's our intent, as well as working with a consultant to help guide us on our 1590 funds. So we have a strategy to present to you for recommendation. 15, sorry, okay, Mayor's Inclusion Task Force, that is still alive and well. We have a lot of wonderful individuals who still volunteer, but we're looking at doing a refresh and giving them a clear lane where they can thrive and really flourish. Their intent and interest right now is really to be a conduit to the community in terms of relationships. So we're really wanting to distinguish the difference between the Equity Commission and their role and purpose, as well as the Inclusion Task Force, so everyone feels they're supporting and they're contributing and that we're certainly not wasting or confusing people in terms of their role with us. Next is our Housing Repair Assistant Program. They do a lot of great work, but that process, the system that they use was built, I think, a little bit in haste. And so when they input information, it does not always provide accurate information out. And that's really important as we are trying to make every penny count with that program. And if there's an opportunity to increase the funding, we want to ensure all of it is accounted for. So we're in the process of improving that. We are looking at, and Guy's team is leading a conversation right now to develop a program to support those around mental health. This would complement the CARES and PD Navigator Program. We're speaking to a couple of individuals right now to see what we can do to also establish a program that would complement collective efforts. We're also looking at supporting economic development, but also leading a Housing Action Plan. There is already an established departmental team, and Hannah was a part of the assessment. And so we want to make sure we participate or have a lead role as much as possible when we start to execute that action plan. Then, last but not least, we will be resurrecting city picnics. We're gonna bring back the old days, but we do ask for your support, participation. We'll hopefully bring back at least four, we'll look at what neighborhoods are gonna be hosting their own, where could we complement where they're not, or looking at dividing it amongst planning areas. So certainly more to come. It is a big lift for the city, so we'll be working with all the other departments that it does take to put these on successfully. But we do realize it was a gap and a missing experience, and it's one that we need to bring back. So that is our intent, is next summer we'll be bringing those back. So get your aprons on, get ready, because it's coming back. And that is it for us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Mr. President.
I think I heard Councilmember Holleran, and we'll go to Councilmember Prince.
Thank you very much. Is my speaker working?
Yes.
I know we had talked earlier, in, maybe earlier in this year, of providing Equity, DEI training to all of our boards and commissions. Is that, is that happening, is it ongoing, is it done?
It is nearly, if not complete. Benita's here, she had a nearly 85% participation and completion rate, and she did provide, I can't remember how many. Six workshops, she said. So she did do and then complete that task, absolutely.
That was amazing, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, before I even get into my questions, you've made me a happy council member today. Just by saying that you're bringing back the picnics. So I'm very, very happy. And the picnics are such an important part of who we are as a city, that I'm very happy that they're coming back. And so with that, I will go on to my questions. The Equity Manager position, have you looked at what other cities are potentially doing with their Equity Manager? That's my first question. And my second question is, will there be potential staff, other staffers for that Equity Manager in future years?
Good question, Councilmember. We are doing research, and we are not trying to just create something unique. It needs to be transferable. We want it to meet an industry standard so that it's at the appropriate pay and that the skills we're requesting are matching. So we are researching that right now. And then what was your second question?
Will the, is there potential for additional staffers for the Equity Manager? So we're not having one person do all the work in future years, not in this budget. Just are you, when you're thinking about the Equity Manager, are you thinking down the line on what that might look like?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that are in the works right now. Benita has asked all the administrators, and they've been having conversations on who they could identify as their liaison point person around equity efforts that each department is doing. But we are also looking at how to build the capacity of this department. I think that was the intent of its configuration, because right now, our depth for some of these is one person. It's not very much, and I don't think Equity, the importance of it should be one person either. So absolutely, there's that vision, but it's just starting at first with current needs and tangible needs that we can produce and show.
Thank you so much, MJ.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for your presentation. That's always great. I have several questions, but I'm gonna start with the Equity Manager, and then later after, they come back to me, I have several questions about the Neighborhood Program. And of course, you have two happy council members. I also have advocated for those picnics since day one. Equity Manager, before I ask my question, I want to acknowledge the incredible work of Benita Hurd that she has done for the city, and not just for the city, but for the region. And I do remember that when we hired her with the first contract, it wasn't the works that we were gonna have this manager eventually. So the transition, thanks to her, is gonna be very easy. But I really want to acknowledge her, what she has bring, not just to these, has brought, I'm sorry, to this table, but as well to the region, and how lucky we are that we got to work with her. Following the question of Councilmember Prince about the Equity Manager, are we planning that this position will be filled, how soon? And do we know what is the job description?
Developing that job description, it'll be in partnership with HR's guidance in terms of what is the baseline framework that we have to provide, as well as, again, what are the regional similarities and other jobs? We don't want to make it so obsoleter unique that it, you know, it doesn't transfer well or it's not regionally respected. So we're in the partnership of that. Benita is definitely giving us her guidance and recommendations based on what she's seen. Chan and our team has extensive DEI experience and knowledge. And so our goal is to create the best that we possibly can. We're waiting for this process to be completed and be funded, and then we'll get started on it as soon as we can.
Thank you.
And then also, Councilmember to follow up, Perez, we will be coming back in December with a presentation on both the senses, but also we're working on This Is Your Life for Beneath It and Rent It. And so we're in the process of collecting all of her extensive efforts between relationships, where she's represented the city. And so we will, are working very hard to not lose the progress that has been made and memorialize the efforts so that, and to make it also visible. The goal is to build.
Mr. President.
Ralpherson.
Thank you. Great job, Mary Jane. MJ, Mary Jane, either one. So I'm gonna go off presentation to the big book here. One of the things that I noticed, it was the last bullet point under the Human Services kind of breakout session. It was establish the first Behavioral Health Center in Newton, providing mental health services and homelessness resources, including showers, housing navigation and mail-in, post-out, post, or out, mail-in, post, outpost services, mail services. I noticed that wasn't necessarily in the, in the goals in the presentation. And I guess my question is, when you look at that, is that the plan for 2023, 2024? And is that incorporated in these numbers? And if so, I'm just curious, where?
So for providing you those highlighted accomplishment and goals, it was really to give you a smattering of the department, now that we're trying to present ourselves in that holistic way. It wasn't to copy everything that was in the budget book and put it in here and exhaust you. So that is there. From my understanding, some of that happened when I was coming on board. I think that was transitioned, some of it from the Providence Project that was in place. But what we're trying to do is put a pin on that and make sure that the 1590 funds have a more strategic plan. So nothing will be implemented until we're able to show you through that, you know, assessment and recommendations from, I would say, an interdepartmental team and a consultant to say, is this still the best viable option? Because a lot is changing in the region in terms of funding and expectation and partnership opportunities around mental health, as well as homelessness. So I think it was a carryover, and our goal is to continue to work towards it. It's just working with council and my colleagues behind me on what's the best vessel for that. Thank you.
Yep, Councilmember Holleran.
I am the third very, very pleased council member with the picnics. I will volunteer, I will volunteer to bring a stool and a very gravelly voice and be king and serve lemonade.
Got it? Thank you.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, MJ. I have a question in terms of the $100,000 request for the Housing Opportunity Fund. How did you come up with that number? Has it been, in the past, we had an average or, and what is, you mentioned the tenant use, but just kind of overall, how did you come up with the number?
I have to, Vaughn, and I apologize, that was done before I was here, so I'm not exactly sure kind of how that number came to be. I just definitely cannot articulate that that's to support homeownership, affordable homeownership. So I can follow up with you on that one in terms of what were the conversations had prior to me being in this position? Just to give you more context.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's impossible to keep track without the little money lights.
You have to keep your head on a swivel, council member.
Doubt it out, Shannon, when you want to talk.
Well, thank you, MJ, this was an excellent presentation, I'm also very happy. I'm, I was a little, I mean, I appreciate my fellow council members' questions. A little sad to hear that the Behavioral Health Center is not something that's yet to fruition, but definitely, I'm gonna keep my hopes up with that one. I also want to understand, with this Equity Manager, looking at all of the responsibilities, it seems like a lot for one person. And so I guess I want to better understand, are you confident in that one FTE? Or have you considered bumping that to a 1.5? Because it is a lot for one.
Yeah, so all of these requests were in motion, and so I'm certainly trying to, you know, do justice to what was proposed. From what I understand, it's to get it going in terms of continuing, again, the work that's been done, that, you know, again, big shoes to fill based on Benita. But there's a myriad of examples of how to make it work with just one person. But to your point, we're definitely not deterred or won't come back if it looks like this is too much work. We want it to be successful, it's important work. But I think the intent was to initially transfer over from Benita as our consultant to this individual's position. And we're in the process of capturing what she's done. And if we can make sure that's spread out amongst our department and also having interdepartmental efforts, because that's really, it is happening throughout all our departments. We just are figuring out how to continue to evolve and grow this, but it's definitely a possibility. Yeah.
Thank you. Mary Jane, so I have several questions about the Neighborhood Program, but I'm gonna divide them, so I give all the opportunities to my council members. And the reason why I have so many questions is because among my five priorities that I have in the city, one of them has been always the Neighborhood Program. And the reason is because I have seen what the results are in one community when a Neighborhood Program is successful. And we know, I know firsthand that we provide the tools to the Neighborhood Associations, of the House Associations, and we partner with them. How better we can do our job, because we have the community engaged? So my first question is, in page 354, you have that by 2017, we have 90 recognized Neighborhood Associations, or homeowners associations. Do we know right now currently how many we have?
We're in the process of assessing that. So Remy's been phenomenal, she's been interviewing, talking to the, participating in active neighborhoods, we'll say it that way. I am, we are about to launch Bang the Table, which is a digital platform for engagement, and that's what we'll be providing toolkits for the neighborhoods based on what we know they do need. So we're still assessing that. A lot of them are coming out of being dormant and being able to barely participate in their HOAs, because most of them are HOAs. And then the goal is also to further expand the program eventually to renters. We're still working that through with finance and others to make sure we're supporting our renter population, which is 50% of the community. So we're figuring out right now, we will be happy to report back out. We do want to come back with you on recommended changes, what we're seeing, how they're looking to adjust. But I could not tell you right now the specific number as present day. You know, who's still recognized, and also the bigger question of who's still active. But we will certainly follow up with that.
Follow, or?
Sure. And then Councilmember Prince.
Okay. So on page 356, one of your goals say to span the Neighborhood Programs, to recreate a partner program that will seven support nearly 50%. What is a partner program?
Partner program, what is a partner program?
Yeah.
What would that be? Is, we've not identified a cool name for it, but we realized 50% of our community are renters in even renting homes, condos, apartments, and they're not receiving the same benefits and opportunity to create a community or engagement or space or beautify. And we want to figure out how to replicate that model that we still support, our homeowners that are recognized in that same model, because it's worked. But we want to figure out how to replicate and expand one that is specific to renters, because they're also residents, and many of them are interested in figuring out how to create community. So don't have a name for it, but it is to replicate the model. But working through with finance, there's a lot of processes to get reimbursed, especially when you're trying to access those grant funds. So it's just figuring out the framework in which we can make it successful.
Thank you, I will come back to you. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
And MJ, you may not have the answer to this just yet, and it may be something, in fact, it'd be great if at some point you came back and there was a Neighborhood Program presentation at Committee the Whole, hopefully before the end of the year, if not, beginning of next year. My question is, COVID's done a number on all of our Neighborhood Associations, and we have quite a few who've gone dormant. Do we have a plan or a toolkit or a way of identifying potential leaders who may want to pick up the baton and reactivate their Neighborhood Associations?
We did, and we are doing that, well, on a small scale, for sure. It's definitely not as big as we hope it to be, but we're really supporting the ones that are choosing to be active. So this summer, we had, for example, at Tiffany Park, they had their Neighborhood Event. And typically during those events, that's the best way to encourage one of the residents to participate and reinvigorate the whole program and letting them know what's available. So we are reaching back to say, are you interested with existing and updating their contact list? Because that was also a bigger challenge. Communicating through Nextdoor ended up being the best way, because it could get through whoever. because it could get through whoever was responsible for the HOA. And depending on how active they were, that disseminated the information. And so that's why we always said just use Nextdoor, because all residents got that information. So right now, it's just kind of boots on the ground, talking to the neighborhoods, contacting them, seeing what their needs are. And Remy's been using that opportunity to, as she introduces herself as the new person. So that's it for now. I mean, you're right, we don't have a strong answer there. And we do plan on coming back before the end of the year, just to give an overview of where we're at and what we're seeing. So.
One quick follow-up, Mr. President. Have we, for the associations that have kind of gone dark or dormant, have we reached out to those leaders to find out if they potentially have someone that they know in the neighborhood who may want to pick up the baton and get it reactivated and re-going?
I have to ask Remy about that. She has received requests from neighborhoods on asking how to reinvigorate their HOA and even how to operate their HOA. So some of them are struggling in terms of that. We're recommending them to property management companies that help manage HOAs. So we are getting asked from the, some of the existing members, how to help them prop themselves up at the moment. I don't know if we've asked them that specific question, but we certainly can do that. And we can certainly survey and say, if it's not you, it doesn't have to be a board member, but is there anyone else in your community reaching out? Some of them are not even aware of who their HOA board members are. And so we have on a few instances, requests, received a request from a resident and the HOA board member who does, is working with us. So yes, there's a lot of loose ends and gaps in communication.
So not just the HOAs, but the actual neighborhood associations as well?
It's, we probably need to do a full relaunch and reminder and kind of roadshow just to remind people of the program. We definitely just wanted Remy to get her legs underneath her. And that's also why we got Bang the Table, is we want to direct them not just to kind of our static website, but using something like Bang the Table where it's a bit multi-dimensional in terms of how you can activate that information and utilize that space.
Thank you, M.J.
Councilmember Reverend.
M.J., on page 357, you have one of the other 2023, 2024 goals. Continue outreach and communication on the city's rental registration program and continue coordination with co-compliance for enforcement of properties. It's a simple question. Does that, do you know at this point if that's going to include kind of the short-term rental program and, and the, why are you smiling? Is that the smile, like, I don't know? The short-term rental program and basically the enforcement of the parameters there. Does that, is that falling under your purveyor now?
We want to answer the question for you right now.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, council member. So the rental registration program is only for long-term residential rentals. There are separate requirements in the city for short-term rentals. We require them to get a City of Rent and Business license through our finance department. So there's requirements and processes associated with that. In terms of enforcement, I would have to defer to our colleagues in CED.
I'm wondering, is that under your umbrella or is that something when it comes to that aspect, CED or something?
Yeah, we currently do not have an active role in either in taking or enforcing short-term rental.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you, Council President. M.J., thank you. I wanted to ask, and you may not have the answer for this, but the outreach plan in general for the equity manager, do we have a plan that's in its nascent stage? Or can you share a little bit?
Yeah, they slipped me a note, which is very helpful. Thank you, team. They also, as a reminder, so Chan's position, which is the Community Outreach Coordinator position, does support, would support the equity manager. So back to Councilmember Vera and your question to Councilmember Vaughn, is we are working on building out that capacity. I know Christie and Executive Services will be rolling out a community engagement assessment. That's been done where team members and staff are really asking for operationalized tools. So we were waiting for that assessment to come out. All of you, most of you all participated in the interviews for that. So we're looking at that, looking at also capturing what Benita has worked on, again, to not lose those relationships. So we'll be formulating that. We don't have one, and I apologize, we don't have one kind of ready to go right now. It's just we're working on kind of the collection in order to create. Thank you.
Herparus.
I'm going to second that idea that we should bring the neighborhood program just specifically to talk about that, because I think there are a lot of questions, specifically, I believe, the council members that we were here in 2017. We have high expectations for the experience that we had with that program. So I'm going to table some of those questions, just because, because, you know, I want you to have their responses at the time. So but following the question, I do believe that the neighborhood program is not the job of one person. It's actually the job of the whole, all the city departments. What I saw, when I saw the picnics at the time, or the neighbor-to-neighbor meetings, it was every single head department there with staff helping, because this was a whole-city effort. And I see that in page 360, you talk that in one of the accomplishments is to bring back the staff liaison group. If you can speak that more about that, because I do remember that until the last day that Chief Milosevic was the chief, he was the liaison of Arlington Neighborhood. And until the last day that Katie was working here, she was the liaison for North Renton, and they are still missing that. So if you can speak more about how you're working with other departments to bring this back.
Yes, so the liaison model provided one or more departmental representatives to be connected and identified for the neighborhood programs as a contact and a conduit. So if you needed someone for the police department, you had several staff members that they could reach. And back in our heyday, you're correct, it was the chief and another command staff in addition to the engagement team. And so it just provided that direct channel and resource so that residents participating could get to their questions a bit faster and easier, as well as they could invite the departments out to their respective neighborhoods. But departments could also tap into that channel as well. So there is reciprocity between the community and the departments. I think it just kind of got lost in the transition of when Norma left and then it came to Bejray. But we definitely saw the importance and such as you and a few others also expressed interest in bringing it back. So we're, we have it, we're just still kind of still framing it out, making sure that the individuals from each department. And the goal is to grow it beyond one person. We're trying to help work with departments on, as they address their capacity. But it is a huge resource and community members love being able to have a name and a face and a phone number and an email that they can directly reach. So we definitely saw value in bringing it back.
Thank you, M.J., and thank you so much for bringing it back. So I think it was very helpful at the time.
Right, I'm going to go to Councilmember Rivera to hopefully close this out, and then we should probably get moving on to the next topic.
Thank you, Councilmember McIrvin. I just wanted to say thank you for the Human Services Funder Collaborative data that you pulled, how we compare to other cities, because I think this is something really important for us. And I think your HSFC request is very appropriate based of our, based off of our population, how we compare to other cities. And so again, I really appreciate your presentation, everything you've given us. So thank you.
Perfect note to close this out on. Thank you very much. I second those comments. Thank you very much.
Thanks, M.J.
I'll now invite up Chief Schultz and to present the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm John Schultz, your Chief of Police. With me is Deputy Chief Harden. And in the crowd, I got Commander Rutledge and Communication Engagements Coordinator Cindy Morris. It's my pleasure to be here today and present the Police Department's proposed 2324 budget and answer any questions you may have. See, this slide outlines the budget summary highlighting our proposed requests, which I will be going into a little bit more detail here in just a sec. So our mission statement, this is our focus. Safety and quality of life for the community are the Police Department's priorities. We always start with our guiding principles, our mission statement, our core values. When evaluating the effectiveness or efficiency of our programs, does it support our mission? The city's business plan calls for providing a safe, healthy and vibrant community. The PD's primary responsibility is delivering that to the city. The department assumes a leadership role in the community in addressing crime and safety-related concerns. And this role involves implementing proactive and reactive measures to reduce both crime and improve the quality of life for the community. Some of our 2122 accomplishments. We're proud of what we've accomplished over the past two years and the resiliency of our staff. A few of our achievements that I will be highlighting, I've listed here. Hiring and promotions. It's no secret that recruitment, retention and law enforcement profession is difficult right now. And if you've heard any of our previous briefs, we're not immune to it. But since the start of 2021, we've hired 20 commissioned staff members. Well, that's an impressive number. It's kind of kept pace with what our attrition has been. A lot of the credit for this goes to Sergeant Jason Trader, who oversees our hiring and the tremendous job that the HR staff has done assisting in our recruitments. In the same period, we've also promoted six first-level supervisors, three commanders, a deputy chief and a chief. So your outreach and engagement programs during the pandemic restrictions, during the pandemic restrictions, we had to pivot and take a look at other ways and opportunities to engage the community. Fortunately, our engagement team was up to the challenge, taking advantage of virtual opportunities to stay in contact with businesses and neighborhoods. Some of these included educational videos, social media question and answer in the form of Have a Question, Ask Renton PD, and a community favorite, Police Storytime, where officers were recorded reading children's books and to be posted on social media platforms. As soon as restrictions started to lift, our engagement team went into overdrive, hosting some of our regular programs like Coffee with a Cop, Shred-a-Thon and National Night Out. But we also wanted to focus on building relationship in all parts of our diverse community by creating opportunities to engage in neighborhoods. This started with Pop-Up with a Cop series, it's kind of like a police roadshow, trying to bridge the gap between police department and the community by building trust through communication. This also led to our Cops and Barbers program, a program where we go to local barber shops, hang out, build relationships through thoughtful conversations. Technology, thanks to council support, we were able to implement our body worn camera program this year, which also included an upgrade to our in-car camera platform, so we'd be all in the same system. Doing this added in transparency, accountability, build public trust, and really was just the best practice. What it's given us is that unbiased verification that your officers are doing it right. This was a heavy lift and couldn't have been done without the support of several other city departments, including the city attorney, IT, Debbie Scott was absolutely invaluable, facilities, HR and the city shops. Training is one of the particular areas of pride for us. A group that we have always believed to be one of the best in the region is our training cadres. They reinforce our priorities, play a significant role in shaping our culture. We are always doing skills training, defensive tactics, range, driving courses or reality-based training. But what I'd really like to highlight today is two of our recent department trainings. The first is Cohort, which was a four-hour class attended by all Renton PD members. The acronym stands for Community Organizers Helping Officers Restore Trust. They also kind of use it as the definition of cohort, which is a group of people brought together for a shared interest or goal. This is a diversity, equity, inclusion training course aimed specifically at law enforcement officers with the goal of developing strategies to initiate consistent conversations with our community to continue to build trust. The purpose of the training was to give Renton officers and staff a foundation for developing strategies specifically in communities of color. This training empowered officers to become more comfortable speaking about challenging topics, meeting people where they are and providing access to the department through consistent dialogue and relationships. Our other training I want to highlight is ABLE. It's an eight-hour class. It's mandatory for all commissioned personnel. The acronym stands for Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement. It's an evidence-based program developed through Georgetown University School of Law, empowering officers to prevent misconduct, reduce mistakes, promote officer health and wellness. This is a program that we actually had to apply to be a part of, which included letters of support from the community. And by the end of next month, we should have our entire department through it. And then our co-responder unit, which I believe last week, Councilmember Ohio Larran, you brought up this program. This will be a partnership with the Renton Regional Fire Authority's FD Care's Unit to provide mental health professionals that can respond to calls for service, to assist the PD with community members that suffer from mental health issues, addiction or homelessness. It was budgeted as part of the 2022 budget for $210,000. And this is from the 1,590 funds, but that amount will carry forward to the 2023. And once we have a finalized agreement with fire, we will come back to council and request a budget adjustment for appropriation of funding for the future years to keep it going. All right, next slide. So I think Councilmember Van, you alluded to this last, last week. One of our challenges has been, how do we return a sense of safety and security to the downtown area? Our first budget request involves implementing a new patrol district that would encompass the downtown core. Currently, the task of addressing concerns in the area has fallen to our special enforcement teams to work proactively to manage the issues around the problematic behaviors. They're doing an incredible job, given the restraints of their work, but that division is also responsible for a number of other critical tasks in the city. So to consistently address the current and any future issues of downtown, our plan is to create a new patrol district with the sole focus of providing a consistent and sustainable presence in the area. And we'll coordinate with, sorry, officers assigned to the district will be a liaison for the businesses and residents in the area and will collaborate with the FD Care's Unit to address quality of life issues in the area. Successes for the group will be measured by reduction in calls for service, reduced response times to calls and a general sense of safety in the area. Side six, equipment. So our objective has always been to be the regional leader in developing progressive law enforcement services. In fact, that's our vision statement. So for this, we're asking for a one-time increase in our 2023 budget to be used to update department technology, increase efficiencies and procure equipment that would work as a force multiplier, increasing our ability to serve and protect our community at the highest level. So this would include things like, you see the camera trailer right there. We already have purchased one and have it deployed downtown. But it's, it's something that we see as, like we say, a force multiplier, where we can put it in high-crime areas and it can work as kind of an overt deterrent. And if it's not a deterrent, then, you know, we have the ability to watch video or, or watch it live to kind of take in what's happening. So Communications Engagement Coordinator, as I mentioned in our accomplishments, we're very proud of our Communications and Engagement Group, which currently consists of three non-commissioned employees from what used to be our Community Programs and Crime Prevention Group that have kind of ad hoc morphed into our Communications Group out of necessity for us. They all do a fantastic job, but each has a specific area of expertise. The position of Communications and Engagement Manager would enhance these efforts by coordinating our outreach and communication to get maximum effectiveness and all, more importantly, managing our image to reinforce legitimacy within the community and ensure coordination with the city's other communications units. With increased public scrutiny and sentiment, building and maintaining trust in the community is one of our priorities and is the basis for the first pillar of President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. We need to be more intentional and forward-thinking in our outreach and build upon the trust with our community. Public records. When we were implementing the body worn camera program, we knew that it would have an impact on the number and the intricacy of the public records requests that we were receiving. At the time, we made an intentional decision to see At the time, we made an intentional decision to see, to see what that impact was going to look like before requesting records positions. At any given time, there's an excess of 400 open public records requests pending for the police department, which are currently being handled by a staff of two and a supervisor. A requister may have to wait up to two months before they receive all their requested materials. With the addition of this, of these two positions, we'd be providing a better service while also reducing the risk of liability associated with violations of the Public Disclosure I think our last request is due to the increase in personnel costs, infrastructure, building, maintenance. We're looking for an increase to our 2024 budget of 176,000 to be allocated for Valleycom. And that completes my prepared presentation. Thank you for your attention. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have or not.
I'll open up the questions. Councilmember Alberson.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. My first, maybe it's two-parter. The, the equipment request for the 500,000, one of the things I noted was 2024, and you, I appreciate you having it up there, but so there are no anticipated equipment needs for 2024? I mean, given, I mean, technology changes, it evolved.
And we're hoping that, that with the 2023 budget, we can bridge that gap of where we, where we currently are and to get us back up to, to that level. So that's why we didn't foresee the need in the 2024. It was a big ask for the 2023.
Okay. Okay. So kind of a carryover, if you will. Second part of the question, what's to stop someone from destroying that, I'll use the technical term, camera doohickey?
Right, the, the, yeah, the, the trailer, the trailer camera?
Yeah.
You know, nothing can stop them from doing it. There is, I could tell you that the cameras that are on it are, are top of the line. So if they were to do it, we would have excellent evidence of them doing it.
Okay.
At least there's follow-up.
Okay.
Ohiohler and then Councilmember Rivera.
With regard to the 176K for Valleycom, is that just an increase in our ILA, or what, what specifically is that increase going to fund?
May I ask Karen to?
Yes, it's just an increase in our annual legal agreement. Most of it is going for staff and overtime for Valley Communications.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief Schultz, for this great presentation. I appreciate it. My question has to pertain to the police performance measures that are on page 382. And with understanding the new communication engagement position, there seems to be a bit of a lapse in base information in regards to the community's safety and health impressions, everything from residents' report feeling somewhat safe to very safe or what have you. There's nothing from 2017 onward. How do we expect to measure our development if there hasn't been really a survey, and I'm guessing why there hasn't been one done?
And I believe, I can get back to you with, with, to make sure I'm answering this properly. I think, I think prior to that, that was a survey that the city had put out, and I just, I think it's done every so often, one hasn't been done since then, and I don't know if that had, was partially COVID-related. I'd love you if you have the right answer.
We did have the next community service, survey primed and ready to go in March of 2020. So we did not think it was a good time to ask anybody how they were feeling, and we have paused it, and actually Ryan will be conducting that, and you'll hear about that in our presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President.
Thank you, Chief. Great presentation. I have several questions, but I'm going to start with the first one. In page 217, in the city area safety and health, there is a proposed 120,000 for 2023 and 2024 for the city parking garage security contract.
I'm sorry.
City parking garage security contract.
Okay.
What is that?
That is currently, and Martin might be able to answer this much better than I.
Here comes.
I, I love this. The question's common.
As part of the issue we had with a lot of folks doing some unnecessary activity in the parking garage, certainly those that were not patrons, we, and the police department being overwhelmed with the other tasks they had in terms of that and the lack of staffing, we hired a private security firm to come out and provide some monitoring and maintenance of that parking garage. And so we did that as an experiment to see how well it worked and whether we were able to be effective in terms of moving those people out of the parking garage and creating a safer environment for the patrons. Happy to report that it's worked really well. We've, we started out at 21 hours a day, and we're going to drop it down to, certainly a lower number. We're decreasing slightly as we go along, but this is still a requirement of almost 12 hours a day of security at that garage in order to maintain the effectiveness and safety of the patrons for that particular garage. And so that's what this particular ask is for, is for that, those additional dollars going forward. It was not part of our base budget. We basically put that in place as a, as a sort of a beta test, and now we know that it's works. We want to continue that program onward until such time as it's no longer necessary.
Thank you very much, Martin. If I may have a follow-up question, and maybe this is not your department, but I'm so happy to see that, that is resulting on less criminal activity around the area, but is, who is in charge of cleaning around that area, around the parking, parking garage, and Is Metro has any responsibility at all?
Yeah, it's a combined sort of effect. I've got sort of different levels in my department, as well as a portion of it that applies to Parks and Recreation as well. So inside the garages is facility maintenance. On the exterior garage, along the public right away, the parking, I mean, sorry, the sidewalk area is Public Works Solid Waste Division. And then as it gets to the park portion of it, the Parks and Recreation folks clean that area. Metro has portions of it that they clean around the particular bus stops, that they have folks that come in and do that as well. And so that's where we, we sort of have a shared responsibility, but they clean just the bus stops themselves. And there's certainly the activity that steps outside of that that then falls on our folks to do that.
Thank you very much, Martin.
I had, I had several questions, now I just can't think of it.
But one of the question I had is about investigative, under the investigation division. Currently, how many officer detectives do we have there? And, and because I, I know there's like backlog and so forth, so I just want to understand the, the process and if there is, where in the process as far as from incident, arrests, investigation, or no arrests, investigation, prosecution, right, which gets handled at the city attorney or the county prosecutor? So just want to understand investigative tools.
I can find out the exact number for you. I'm afraid I don't have that with me right now. But as far as, as they process their caseload, and I believe I reported out a few weeks ago, each detective right now carries a caseload between 20 and 25 open cases, and those are constantly, as, as they come in, they're prioritizing which ones need to be worked the fastest. If it's, if it's in custody, especially if it's a person crime, those go to the top, top of the list, and those are, those are taken care of immediately. Nothing we do compromises the safety to the community of, of not processing that case through with a suspect.
Not only, yeah, please.
Yeah. And then thank you for presenting on the downtown patrol district. I would like to, and you might not know the, the answer to it, but kind of the projected timeline, obviously, once this gets approved, but kind of your vision of it.
So, so right now, like we've talked about our staffing numbers quite a few times. So we wouldn't anticipate being able to hire those four to come on immediately and take that, take that task on. We can reevaluate where our other units are and if we have to pull people from, to do that. Our goal is to at least have it budgeted, and we can use some of that salary savings to maybe hire other officers off duty to take up that role in those tasks. But what we see in the important piece is just getting that consistent officers down there on a more consistent basis to deal with their continuing issues.
Councilmember Alberson.
Mr. Chair, so that was a perfect segue to my question, Chief. I'm going to go to the numbers on page 383. Under regular salaries, so 2022, the estimate, I guess, of where it's going to end up is 20 million 578. And then proposed for 2023 is 20, 20 million 957. But with seven new officers, let's, let's pretend in a perfect way, where, where is the, where, where are we robbing Peter to pay Paul? I mean, it, it didn't seem consistent with the expected number increase in salaries. And I was looking through, I see supplies is about 400,000 less. I don't know if we're just going to be more efficient with our posting notes or something, but can, can you speak to kind of where that, where the numbers lie there?
Yes. So the 2022 estimate includes budget for retro pay because we just settled the union contract in 2022, and we paid retro for 21 and 22. So 22 estimate includes a budget adjustment this year. It's a one-time budget adjustment for that retro pay. And so if you look back at 2022 original budget, bridging to the, the 2023 budget, that's where you can kind of see the, the difference. And a lot of this extra funding for the police and a lot of the departments is coming from the BNO tax increase that we implemented.
Thank you. It's a good thing you brought all your assistance here, Chief.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. It's a follow-up from the question of Councilmember Van about the four new positions for downtown, which I think is great. I think it's amazing. But in fact, we are not going to be able to fill those positions, or we're going to be able to fill them, but not put this police until maybe if we're lucky, 2024, 2025. In the meantime, what you're, I'm hearing you to say is that we are going to be putting in place some of the police officers that we have right now, and with overtime, that's where we're going to cover that to solve the problem that we have right now. Am I understanding this correct?
At least short-term, and as we maybe look at it in a bigger picture, we're, if we can reallocate resources from another one of our divisions and put more permanent people in place downtown, then we will. But yeah, for, for short-term, while we evaluate what it's totally going to look like, yeah, that's probably.
So following that, 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 that clarification, one of your goals for the patrol operation division in 2023, 2024 is to increase the patrol minimum, minimum staffing to address criminal activities, I assume, in the whole city of Renton. If this is for 2023, 2024, are we planning to have a long-range projections that shows for the next six years, how many police officers are we going to be losing because they're going to be retiring, plus the number of new police officers that we're going to be hiring? So that way, by the time that someone has to retire, we don't have to wait two years to, to have them ready to go to the streets?
Absolutely. We don't want to just, like, currently, we're just barely keeping up with attrition, and as we lose officers, you know, we're getting them and they're not even on the street yet with our numbers. Yeah, that's something we do, we forecast, and I mentioned Jason Trader, who does our hiring. He also forecasts out, you know, how many people do we have eligible for retirement to give kind of a recruitment goal for us, and that's what you're talking about. Yeah. And as we also look at calls for service and the number of officers we have, that's kind of how we judge, do we need to request more officers? Or, or is there still, are we still at the position where we can, you know, we're not overburdening our officers with the calls for service that they're responding to? So yeah, as, as we do that, we are looking at, at what our, our future with retirements look like and where we need to be, and trying to hire ahead of that if we can. But again, we're competing with, with every other department in the region for the same qualified applicants.
Thank you, Chief.
Ohiohler.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, I have to adjust this, and it can be loud. I, I wanted to follow on, Chief, your statement of a sense of safety in downtown. I would like to see us have a sense of safety in all of our communities, and really what that involves is just being seen, just being seen. And I don't know if that's like a special focus area, or if that's something that happens and it's just that I have to happen to miss the drive-by when it does happen in my neighborhood, or can you just talk a little bit about that?
I agree. What you're talking about is officer presence in an area and the fact that, that can have on, on crime. And, you know, typically, you know, our officers, especially in their patrol districts, are looking at for where is the, where can they have the highest impact? Where's crime on the increase? So that's where they're going to spend a majority of their time during their patrol when they're not responding to 911 calls. And maybe I misspoke when I said that sense of security just for that downtown core. Of course, we want a census, you know, we, we want everyone to feel safe in their quality of life to, to be the best it can. So, but when I say the sense of safety, it's, it's, you know, a lot of that's from the emails that I'm sure you're receiving also, when, when people discuss that sense of going downtown and not feeling safe, or not wanting to, to shop or go to any of the businesses.
Thank you.
I'm still trying to figure out how to word mine. So.
Councilmember Perez.
Great, thank you.
So we just have a wonderful presentation of MJ talking about the neighborhood program and how important this community is. And I'm very happy to see that in page 386, you put as part of your goals to continue with the community engagement. And this is a follow-up, kind of what Councilmember Van said, Councilmember Ohiohler said, while a lot of communities want to see more presence, another ones want to know that you guys are there, but they don't want to feel that they are, you know, there is surveillance around them. So is that middle good, sweetest spot what we have to find? But I'm asking about, how about the work that we're doing with the neighborhood program? In the past, I remember that the, the patrol officers that normally are, you know, how do you say, you put them in different neighborhoods.
Districts, yeah.
Yeah, different neighborhoods. They were part of the, you know, the neighborhood associations, the special presentations. I don't know where is, I couldn't find the, the Neighborhood Watch program. I think I found it in page 386, and you mentioned it. Where are we with that, with the Neighborhood Watch program, as well as the, a, working together with the different neighborhood associations? We, we find out right now that we don't know how many are established or not. It's very hard, you know, to be able to connect with, with the neighborhoods one-on-one. So even though the coffee, the coffee with the police is an amazing success right now, and I think it's great tool, going to them instead of waiting for them to come to us, I don't know if something that is in the.
I'm sorry. And that's our focus, right? Getting out in the community, and that's kind of what the whole, our training was about, that cohort piece is, is getting out and meeting people where they are, not expecting them to come to us, and, and having that outreach. And, and like MJ said, you know, following COVID, you know, we're kind of doing a reset. And thank God for, I know Cindy's here, she's done an incredible job with, with our neighborhood outreach before, and I know she still has all of her contacts and is continuing on with those meetings. And as we move forward, the partnership with MJ's group and Parks and Recreation in going to several of those events, and we'll, we'll be right back into them as they pop up.
Thank you, Chief. Follow-up really quick on this. It's, yeah, because we are also missing the night, night out, what was that?
The National Night Out.
We lost the picnics with that one as well, you know, and I don't know, we, we need, I, I think it's important to, to, to come back. And really brief, can you explain a little bit, where is the Neighborhood Watch program right now?
Or is it right now?
Yeah.
Oh, if you'd like. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you brought it.
I'd rather get the subject matter expert up here.
So I wasn't expecting to speak, but I'm happy to. So yeah, thank you. I appreciate your interest in that, and I'm really excited for the neighborhood program. As you know, I was very close to the prior one that was coordinated and managed by Norma. And it, it's a really wonderful opportunity, when you have events like that, to segue into a lot of different conversations. And kind of like MJ had kind of mentioned, there are certain things that were very dormant over the last couple of years, and certainly Neighborhood Watch was one of them, although there was always an encouragement on our end to have those virtually, just everything kind of went on pause for a little while, right? So I'm really looking forward to working with Remy. We, we met not too long ago. I was very excited to see that she was an addition to the city, and I really feel like there's opportunity and a really organic partnership there between our two departments as I'm working with her. And one of my goals before I leave is to kind of rebrand the Neighborhood Watch program. I think that there was a time and place for that original way that was set up. I just think now when there's a 50% rental, you know, I just think now when there's a fifty percent rental, you know, population, I, I don't think that was taken into consideration, maybe when that program was first introduced many moons ago. I think that's really something that I want to appreciate and take into consideration as we move forward and rebrand that program completely. And in speaking to Remy and, and MJ's team, they were very excited to kind of work in coordination. Because I feel like those two definitely go together. They just seem like they're organically going hand in hand. And to kind of piggyback off of this being reintroduced into our city on the neighborhood program level, I really just want to get into all of those engagement opportunities that they're also going to be planning. So I can have those conversations for sure. Because people obviously have a lot of interest and concern in our city right now. And so what I've been trying to do is really have meetings that have opportunities for questions and concerns and kind of thoughtful dialogue. And I'm not really pushing the formal program of Neighborhood Watch because they want to feel safe, they want to feel secure, and they want to know how things are running and how recent legislation, what does that look like? How does that impact us? What kind of services can we offer in the future? What can we do to help the police department change that? Because we want to feel safe here. So I've really been focusing more on that as opposed to the Neighborhood Watch Program. Because really, that's what's foremost in people's mind. I'm very happy to talk to them about how to hard target their home and, you know, institute things that will make their home at lower risk for being broken into. But really, in the forefront of their mind is all that other stuff. So I really want that absorption factor to be there. So the pink elephant in the room are the meetings that I'm having with folks now, be it virtually or in person. And that's really about safety, calls for service, legislation, police staffing, all of that kind of stuff. So definitely want to rebrand before I leave. That definitely is going to be in coordination and partnership with MJ's group. And then, yeah, any other questions about that?
Thank you, Cindy. And before you leave, make sure that there is someone there.
No, yeah, they're not going to let go of my spot. That's my goal is to rebrand that before I leave. So first quarter of twenty twenty-four, you'll have a great, fresh, brand-new person there to continue the good fight.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, um, looking, now, I know the conversation around crime and safety has been a really important topic, especially when it comes to the Renton Downtown Corridor. And I really think the idea of a downtown jurisdiction or area to patrol is very important. I also know, kind of want to ask your thoughts on, are the four additional FTEs appropriate? And how else are we supporting your officers in terms of felony case referrals? Because I also know that I believe a release from the King County Prosecutor's Office showed that our referrals went down by about thirty-six percent between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. And so do we think that this new kind of restructuring, these new four FTEs will be sufficient in kind of relieving some of that? Or what, what's kind of your takeaways?
You're talking about the decrease in referrals for felony cases. And so that kind of coincides with the Blake decision also. Where now, where we used to refer drug crimes as felonies to King County, we're no longer doing that. So I think that takes up a lot of that decrease comes from that. And if I, if I am understanding your second question is for officers enough to support that area? That, that's what we're going with now, just because we, we feel by shrinking that area down, that their zone of responsibility. We're not quite sure how that's going to look yet or what the boundaries are going to be. But for, for now, we feel like that should be sufficient to, to be able to give a little bit more, you know, that, that beat cop kind of feel to it where they're able to make contact with the businesses and the owners, attend events, you know, and kind of restore that feeling of, like you said, the presence, right? Of having them down there, seeing that people know who they are, that, that contact, that liaison person.
Thank you so much.
For Halloran, and then we'll get down to Councilmember Alverton.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation, chief. I really do appreciate it. Two questions. One, I'm sure I will bring up when we have Doug Levy in front of us to talk about legislative agenda. But I wanted to ask, are we looking at talking to the legislature about opening up more spots for more trainings? So we don't have a significant backlog when we're trying to get our officers trained so we can get them on the streets sooner? That's one. Two, prior to COVID, we had done a lot of outreach with area youth. I know we did some events with the Renton African American pastors group. Are we looking at re, redoing that as we start coming out of COVID and are doing more things in person?
I'll answer the second one first. Absolutely. Engagement is, is one of our top priorities and especially re-engaging the youth. We've been having conversations with the school district around that and how we can support each other on continuing that. For your second question, yeah, it's part of our legislative agenda is, is asking for the funding to support more classes at the CJTC. And one of the initiatives they're working on right now is even spreading the training out a little bit more and having regional academies. So a lot of the agencies that are on the east side of the mountains don't have to bring all of their student officers over to Burien to attend CJTC. And so they'd have a training campus, or I think they're going to open a few more training campuses across the state. And what that'll end up doing is freeing up slots over at our academies. So hopefully we can get our students in a little bit quicker.
Thank you, chief.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, thank you. I've heard the phenomenon of when you put a special emphasis in a neighborhood, all you do is move the problem. So is there, do we have any like plan B or any way to monitor if that's happening and a response to that? Or are, are we not, we're just not there yet?
No, I think we, we always monitor where our calls for service are coming from. And, and that's kind of how we allocate resources to, to certain areas. Yeah, I totally understand what you're saying. If you're, you know, you're, you're dealing with the issue here, you're just pushing it to another neighborhood. And if we're talking about the downtown area, we're, that's, once we start our, our more significant emphasis down there, it's going to be in collaboration with all the social services too, to try to, you know, get people in to help if they have the mental health or addiction issues. So we're not just moving them out of one area into another neighborhood that's going to be impacted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alverton.
Thank you, Mr. President. So chief, I'm going to ask you what may be a tough question to answer. I'm just going to put that out there. So I, I honestly feel, and maybe it's just me, I, I feel that, that Renton is at this nexus point, if you will, when it comes to public safety and, and crime and that sort of thing. And by that, I mean, we do the right things, we get a handle on it, you know, we're going down the right path. We don't do the right things or don't do enough of them, then it's a slow trickle down the wrong path. And so, you know, it's budget year for, for two years or whatever it is. My question to you is, given everything that you, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but given everything you looked at and everything you anticipate and, and, and your special police knowledge of things, are you asking for enough? That's the tough part of the question.
That is a tough question. And so to answer it, I think we're on the right path. Yeah, incrementally, maybe in, in future budget years, we may increase that as we look at, at calls for service type of calls, what services we, we want to provide to the, to our community. But I think right now, addressing what our biggest issue is, which for us is that downtown area right now, as we, as we, you know, still provide the services to the rest of the community. I think right now that's the right, right amount.
That's a follow-up question.
Please.
Let's pretend on my way home, I, I run into this suitcase full of money, a lot of money. And I choose not to spend it on myself, which is very slim chance. Let's say I did, and I said, I want to give it to the police department. Yeah, donation. Where would you spend it? Now, let's say it's something, so what would be the first thing that came to mind? As you say, hey, doing enough for what we think right now, where would it go?
Great question.
Thank you.
As I just tried to spend some time thinking through that one. Honestly, I think right now it'd go towards probably some of our officer wellness initiatives, taking care of our staff. Right now, I think we have a pretty robust group in place, but we can always do better taking care of them. In that, and there's a few things where we're even looking for some grant funding to look at some psych visits, some, some visits with doctors, you know, just and, and completely voluntary off the books where they could go do that, you know, on their own. Just certain things to take care of our staff.
Halloran.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate that question and thank you for answering that question, chief. I have a question in term of tracking, because you mentioned about the Blake decision. And at the state level, I believe last time you mentioned there's no tracking system. Are we, how, how are we in our jurisdiction at least to track the number one, the number second temp or third time that we interact with that particular perpetrator? Do we have such a thing that we are going to work on or just going to have to lobby the, the state level?
No, yes, ma'am. We, we do it internally. And an officer on the street is able to call our records or front counter and find out how many times a subject's been contacted. And again, that's only, you know, we can only get the numbers for our jurisdiction. You know, if they, again, they can go to Kent, they can go to Quilla, they can go to Auburn and run into the same thing. But no way of us all knowing how many times they've been dealt with or, or had, or have been referred to services.
Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. I do appreciate the, the fact that you are adding one more person for, one more person, more, one more FTA for community and, and communication management. I think the police department does a great job with the communication tools that you have. And, but I want to kind of follow up a little bit of what Councilmember Alverton say or my interpretation of what he asked you. With today, public safety being one of the, if not the, the first priority for our community right now, I think what I heard is that money should not be a problem. That, that, that's simple as that. We should not tell people that we, we cannot protect them because of lack of. If we need more tools or the tools that we need to do this job right, while appreciating all this budget that you put together is a very good budget, that is a very balanced and sustainable budget. We are facing right now a very unprecedented level of crime in our city. So every single time that I hear people saying you should be thinking outside of the box and whatever they say it, I, I keep thinking, yes, what is that new thing that we can do and how we can do it, right? We should consider. But following all of this, in the last month, probably, I don't know, maybe two months, one of the biggest issues, among other things, is graffiti. And I was looking and digging into the budget, trying to figure it out, where were the positions for the graffiti abatement? And I could not find them. So to, are we budgeting for that program? How many people are working on that? And you see, people, the community think that we have someone with a can, with a paint, that in forty-five, forty-eight hours, they will go and remove this, right? So can you explain better where we are? And even though I know that we're going to have this discussion in the next committee, Public Safety Committee, I will like you to tell me where in the budget is this and how priority is, is. Because for the, right now for the public, it's not that it bothers them how it looks. It's because they believe that is some kind of gang activity or public safety activity.
Yeah, I agree. They see the graffiti and they think it's indicative of crime, crime in their neighborhood. And I couldn't agree more. We do have, right now, our graffiti abatement specialist, Erin, she, she works extremely hard. All those, all the reports come into her. And prior to COVID, she's, she's still getting up and running. And I know we've used that as an excuse quite a few times here, but she's still getting the program back up to the resiliency it was prior to COVID. So one of the things she always did was she would organize volunteer groups on weekends to go out and, and clean graffiti in public areas. And so that's one of the goals she's still working back towards.
I, I, I personally would like to see, but we can have this discussion in public safety. I would like to see what, how, what else we can bring to that, that abatement. Because the response right now for the, the public, I think, I think the expectations are different.
I, I agree of late. It seems like we've seen a real influx of graffiti around the city.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. For the last question, I'm going to think we need to move, move on. I'm going to go to Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you. And regarding graffiti, I, I've got five or six people who are ready with a can of paint and a brush. And they're prepared to go out in the middle of the night and do it if, if that's what's needed. So maybe we should look at some kind of a volunteer group that's willing to adopt their neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. I'm sure we could keep asking questions until council, but I encourage you to, if you have additional questions, submit those in writing and I'm sure we'll get answers. So thank you very much for the presentation. Good conversation.
Thank you very much. Thanks, chief.
And at this time, I will go ahead and call up Kelly Beamer for Parks and Recreation.
Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Council President McGurven and council members. Kelly Beamer, Parks and Recreation Administrator. Good to see everyone. Also want to let everyone know we have our amazing Park and Rec team representatives behind us too that have gone through, you'll see in the presentation, a lot of extraordinary work through the last couple of years. So we'll start with the opening slide, which is just a highlight of the proposed additions, operating budget and our capital budget proposals, which we'll be covering a little bit farther into our presentation through the divisions. Nice opening slide that demonstrates all of the things that our divisions represent. This is our Parks and Recreation mission, where livable and inclusive community is definitely on our highlight of priorities and importance. We also represent through representative government and building a strong downtown economy as well through some of our programs and highlights keeping people through our events. These are our boards and commissions that we liaison and help assist and represent throughout the years, as well as other participations through whether it's city, community, regional, state boards, et cetera, that we stay involved with. And this is just a slide to show there's some vacancies in positions still, but just a highlight of our department. You can see that we have six vacancies in our supplemental staff this year, although up over last year is still at a decrease. We usually, pre-pandemic, would have close to two hundred and forty supplemental staff. A lot of that obviously was through recreation and our limited amount of lifeguards that we had this year. So we'll go straight into administration. List out some of the accomplishments here. I'm not going to read through all of them, but we've definitely, as a department, have done quite a bit. Really proud of our capital projects that we have been moving forward. Also, we've hired and trained the new recreation director, parks and planning and natural resources director and a golf course manager. So significant positions to make sure that they're trained in adjusting and performing their job duties. And we're also, thank you to the council members that were there. The renaming of the Renton Senior Center to honor Don Person was a nice accomplishment also that we just completed. So some of the highlights here, definitely for goals, we will complete the Family First Community Center construction in early twenty-three of spring-ish. Right now, everything has been on time and the project's been moving forward. Hopefully, you've driven by there several times to see how incredible that building looks and then knowing the services that are going to be provided through that. We will be completing our identified bond projects. Those are all bid out at this point, and we'll cover that a little bit more in the parks planning section. And then also, we would like to consider or assess the opportunity to potentially go out for another bond after we complete these projects. There's still other items that need to be taken care of. And that's, has been a, a great way to, to meet our community needs. And then another, another definite priority is to work with the Renton School District. We have an ILA agreement with them between the city and the school district for reciprocal field and facility use. And that's in dire need of updating, so we are going through that right now as well. Jump onto the Renton History Museum that through our business plan and the core services, they provide a self-safe, healthy, vibrant community, promote economic vitality and build an inclusive, informed, deep, free city with equitable outcomes for all through their programming, educational opportunities, whether online or in person, exhibits and celebrating the Renton history. Some of the accomplishments this small but mighty team has taken on and, and gotten done is gone through seven temporary exhibits. And you can see ranging in topics throughout from the history of marriage in Renton to life on the Black and Cedar Rivers. And they've also done a great job along with our other divisions to expand and enhance a lot of our. And they've also done a great job, along with our other divisions, to expand and enhance a lot of our online COVID offerings or because of COVID, being able to provide more technology and easier access. The other accomplishments too, list here, they participated and helped tremendously in the Historic Rent and Tree Tour with our Urban Forestry Division. They did some renovation in the North Gallery, opened that up. If you've been in the museum, it's a really great meeting space and exhibit space. So they did it with the Facilities Division's assistance as well. And as you can see, they accepted an extraordinary amount of historic objects and photographs that need to be catalogued and, you know, brought. They, we have certain criteria that when they get brought on board, how they are displayed or collected and stored as well. Goals for the museum this year, our main goal that we are working on actually right now is the renewal of the museum management agreement between the Historical Society and the city. That's, like I said, in process right now. We expect to complete that in early '23. And then also rebuild the volunteer program throughout the year. Obviously, a pandemic affected that tremendously. And then bringing a Black History Month exhibit in '23 could be fall to winter of '23. We're also working with the Parks Division to work on the history of all of our parks so that we can have that to refer to in our community to be able to review. Next, we have our Parks and Trails Division. They work through representative government, livable community through our core services and the business plan. Great shot of Kool on there. Accomplishments, along with the other departments and divisions, we all are working through what protocols COVID-19 has brought our way. So we have state guidelines and whatnot that we follow, along with keeping our team safe. We also are working on interdepartmental efforts to maintain our irrigation right-of-way areas, the landscaped areas throughout the city. Our team takes care of all the irrigation in those areas, and as we continue to add new areas, we need to make sure that we have the resources to take care of that. We also installed through a grant with AARP, the first, actually the only in Washington State, Fitlot Outdoor Exercise Area at North Highlands, which is part of, like, we noted, part of our age-friendly city designation. We continue to partner with United Way and the School District to support the Summer Lunch Program. And then our staff, actually, Roberta helped work with this one, but we made a much easier process for the tile engraving at Vets Park. So that's an online process now, so it makes it much easier to enter in your requests. So fortunately, we're back to a new normal and getting better, so we were able to host some of our larger events. And that, the team, a lot of our teams support these larger events. And then we make sure that our staff stays current in their training. So we have pesticide applicator license, certified playground safety inspections, and backflow assembly test requirements that run along with our irrigation systems. Most of our teams have received or applied and received a multiple amount of grants. And you can see here some of the grants that this team has been working on. Of note, and we'll talk about a little bit in the goals, but the King Conservation District grant will pay for the remaining portion of the FEMA reimbursement for the Cedar River Trail Bank Stabilization Project. So that was huge to be able to get that as part of the city's sharing costs. So a little bit of data here, you can see the volunteer hours have increased. Fortunately, people are feeling more comfortable getting back out in the community. Our SNAP dollars, or excuse me, our numbers and our SNAP program patrons have increased significantly. Pre-pandemic numbers from 2019, the 2021 number is 162% higher than what we had in 2019. And in 2022, that number is 137% pre-pandemic. So pretty amazing amount of work and, and community assistance through that program. So goals for the Parks and Trails team is, as you know, the Bronson Park Avenue shop is under some issues of structural repair or not repair. So we're looking to secure a location for that team there. It hosts, I think, 22 staff members, and it's temporarily housed in 200 mil, but that's not a, that's not a good park site, nor does it have areas for our equipment and our materials and things like that. So they're jumping all around the city to take care of that. And we just talked about completing the bank stabilization along the Cedar River. And we'll continue to increase our participation with the SNAP program through federal and state assistance. We'll lead the department's efforts we do currently for patrolling and removing encampments in our city-owned properties. So we'll get to the request of what that looks like in just a minute. And then we also will continue to provide our support to our big events and some of the other events that we have coming down the pike, as well as now the new neighborhood picnics. I'm sure we'll be a big part of that as well. So the proposal to, for the budget is to, to hit the mayor's and council's, one of their priorities as far as cleaning up Renton. What this proposal is, is to get a full-time lead Parks Maintenance Worker and two Park Maintenance Two Workers to address three strategies, one being the citywide contracted groundkeeping, groundskeeping, which is part of the right-of-ways, the landscaping and the irrigation. That's taken care of and maintained by a contract right now, and that would, that would continue, but to manage all the new contracts coming in. Incorporating a little bit more of SEPTED or the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design into our landscaping throughout the city. We have hit and addressed some areas, but this would be a little bit more comprehensive look. We'd be able to get to them a little quicker and more thoroughly. If you'll look back at, we have one coming up at Piazza here shortly. We did one behind the scene, or the community center, where the trees at a butt, the 405 off-ramp, were growing down to the ground, and it allowed some hiding spaces for homeless or unwanted activity. And we, the team brought all of those up to about five feet so that you can see straight through and get that more visibility and, like I said, less hiding spaces. And then also addressing the cleanups, the encampment cleanups more, more directly. Right now, we hire a contractor to take out and dispose of what we find in encampments. A lot, a lot of the smaller ones, our teams take care of right now. So the ones that they see along the trails that, you know, on a daily slash weekly basis, some of the bigger ones, we've contracted. That gets fairly expensive, and we've done some analysis that having the workers and the equipment to do that will save a little money, as well as we'll be able to get to them in a more timely and efficient manner. When it comes to the large encampments, we'll be partnering, which we do with police already. They, they come to the sites with Parks workers when they're active sites, and then also with the, the current contracted services so that they're safe when they come in there to remove the encampment materials. So in the larger sites, we'll have police and we'll have Public Works as well assisting. We'll, we'll be coordinating that should this be approved. Then we also are looking for three vehicles. We had four addressed back in 2020, right before the pandemic. We put, we had the eight council-approved positions, full-time positions, and the four vehicles were to align with those new positions. And we held those purchases off until now, hopefully in the 2023, 24 budget. We have one vehicle from Recreation that will help offset that. They're not using that, so that'll transfer in. So we're only requesting for three vehicles. Parks Planning and Natural Resources, they do an incredible amount of work with a small team as well. They provide safe, healthy, vibrant communities, supported planned growth, and influence decision to foster environmental sustainability, build an inclusive, informed, hate-free city, equitable outcomes for all in support of social and economic racial justice. That's areas that they address in the business plan and core services. You can see here, and I know all of you have been up to Sunset Park, so beautiful park that's been open there. We are now, we've completed all of the required design, construction documents, permits, and bids, and we have all four of our bond projects either underway or about to get underway by next week or the week after. Team's done a great job with applying for grants. You can see here, we applied for a little over 2.5 million in grant funding, and we were 100% successful in getting those. So that helps stretch our capital dollars tremendously. Also, we have many multiple play equipment areas that have been replaced. And those are all, we replace them by age of, age and/or safety of the equipment themselves. So you can see here, we had Kool on Kennydale, Kennydale Beach, or excuse me, Liberty, Kennydale Beach and Cascade Parks have all been replaced. And we also have completed this, the new paving at the Senior Center, Activity Center, as well as some accessibility areas too. Oh, I meant to, let's go back one. That quote up in the top there from Parent Map is from, it's an online magazine for parents, that resources and things that are available out in the community. We've had a couple of these, but nice quote that they recognize the work that our team does. We also, through Urban Forestry, as you know, have updated our Urban Forestry Management Plan for 10 years. We worked with Museum for the Historic Tree Tour in the downtown, and we were able to, in person this year, do Arbor Day. So we also implemented a tree risk management program, and we were designated Tree City USA status again for the 14th year in a row. As I mentioned about the grants, again, a significant amount of grants. We have one pending at the bottom, an RCO grant that we applied for, for the renovation of Talbot Hill Reservoir, which has tennis and pickleball courts. We've had a tremendous outpouring of want and need of more pickleball courts. So sounds as though, I think it's going to be within a week that we're gonna hear, but it sounds as though we're gonna be successful on this, so we're gonna be moving that project forward. We also have a forestry management plan, which we've implemented, and now we'll start with new tree plantings throughout the city and tree maintenance. And then we'll also be completing the structural review for Kool on Park and all of our city park bridges that we do every five years, I believe. And then so we'll implement whatever the results come from those. If there's capital plans or projects that need to address any issues, we'll be adding those in as well. We also have many inter-agency coordination involvement through all of what's listed there. And then we'll also be continuing with the interdepartmental coordination, which we do, many departments do, that review and plan the long-range planning efforts on special projects. So for the Parks Planning and Natural Resources team, on the capital page, on page 5-10 is the details of the package. And we'll run through, again, we've got the, the completion of the bond projects, replacing equipment at those noted parks. We have the May Creek Trail acquisition, and through our Parks and Trails, but noted in capital is the Cedar River Trail flood disaster repairs. We also have noted Kool on Beach Swim Assessments, design and permit for the Talbot Hill, once we receive the grant, and collaboration with King County on the East Trail, south to Kool on Park from the Move Ahead Washington Program. And then, as I had mentioned, we also, the Cedar River Trestle Bridge Structural Assessment, that was done a couple of years ago, and now we need to finish some of that project. What we thought would be good is to note what key needs are not currently funded, but as Carrie mentioned in her presentation, the REIT funds may be coming back a little better than expected, so there may be some additional funding. Pavement repairs to the Kool on Trail and Cedar River Trail are a high priority. There's some areas that have root upheavals and things that would need to be addressed. And another high priority is the Parks Recreation and Natural Areas Plan update. That is huge to get updated, because if we don't stay consistent with that, it takes away a lot of our grant eligibility. And obviously, grants help us extend our projects. So Recreation, again, they leverage technology to the hilt through COVID, and we're able to provide a lot of things to our community to keep them engaged. We converted the boat launch permitting to online. We also had better mobile check-in when we had requirements for that, for programming. And also created, right now, the existing technology, we're finishing up the special events or temporary events permit process, so it's a little cleaner and faster and has more description under that. Did you also know all the drive-through events, virtual programming and classes that this team took care of was amazing to keep, like I said, to keep the community engaged. And then we were the largest food drive, largest drive-through food distribution for seniors in King County. And so it is a major, major accomplishment that this team took care of. They also recruited and hired eight new full-time recreation staff. When COVID hit, we went from 20 full-time down to 12, so this was a big push for us. We also finalized the Age Friendly Renton Action Plan, and so we'll be looking at implementation in 2023. And some of the data here, as you know, in 2021, we had very limited operations at H Mac. And in 2022, even with the reduction in lifeguards, we were able to, for the most part, fully open up. And so you can see the increase in participation there. This team also executed several grants through, like we had mentioned before. One of the big ones is the King County Aquatics Grant. We will be looking at going with the, the next round of King, King County Aquatics Grants. That will be in, I believe, early 2023, and that can address some more updates to Henry Moses. We're, goals, which we are in the process right now of activating Liberty Park Building to keep that area and park more family-friendly, if you will. It has, has had a lot of issues in the past. So we have Environmental Science Center that is now in that building. We'll start programming along with some of our recreation programming. And then we're also going to hold an annual community forum on recreation programs and opportunities. Not only, we'll probably do an online survey and an in-person forum, so we get out through our neighborhoods and work with our neighborhood program as well. And as I mentioned, we'll look at some expansion of the season at Henry Moses. Two good things come of that. We get to keep lifeguards on longer, and so they stay employed and active and in our system. And then also, we would like to expand the swim lesson program. We have a lot of youth, and even adults, but a lot of youth that don't have the opportunity to learn how to swim, and we really want to address that. We're reaching out for that. And then finally, Maplewood Golf Course. Much in the way of accomplishments, we did the electronic T-sheet, online booking was added. I wanted to note, in 2021, they remained open every day through the COVID restrictions. We did some assistance to the concessionaire because they couldn't open, so we worked with them so that it could stay viable as a business. And they've paid back all of the, all of the funds that they had to look for help for because they were not able to operate in full capacity. Also, the operating account in 2020, because of pandemic, the golf course was closed for 49 days. So you'll see in a slide upcoming that the rounds were down a little bit, but they were still able to increase the fund balance, net profit, which is as an enterprise fund. In 2021, they increased it tremendously. They, from 2020, they had 128,000 in fund balance. The end of 2021, they had $867,000 in fund balance. And year-to-date, we're showing about 1.5 million. Now, that's gonna change with expenses and revenues, but continues to grow, and they continue to stay extremely busy. Accomplishments that we did for cost savings, as well as environmental assistance, if you will. We converted both the driving range light poles and parking lot light poles to LEDs. We took out all of the old halogen metal halide-style lights, purchased golf carts and put in, it's, the protective netting around the driving range was about three years overdue, and so they were able to get that accomplished. They also, as we look at goals, we'll be looking at fire protection in the cart storage area, renovating some T-boxes in-house, and then obviously- area, renovating some T-boxes in-house, and then obviously keeping our, our customer service rating 85% or better as we do our surveys. We'll also look at purchasing new mowers and equipment that replaces our aging fleet. We haven't replaced equipment in quite a while, so getting that fund balance built back up definitely assists in that. And then upgrade the HVAC controls, as well as doing a plan or assessment for how to replace the turf in the driving range, which is on its last legs, for sure. And with that, the proposal from the golf course is the fee increase, which we bring forth through each budget cycle. The, we also do a competitive market analysis every year. When we go through these, we use seven other area courses that have like facilities and operations. This one, over the course of the 2324 proposed fee changes, we'll be looking at an estimated revenue amount of little over 210,000 over the course of the two years. And that, again, goes back to looking at our competitive market analysis, which keeps us middle to high, not high, but above the middle range of what other courses are charging. And with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you, Kelly, very much. We already have a couple. Some I go first to Councilmember Perez, and then to Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for your presentation, and I want to thank your staff that are here. And Liz, long time no see you. Good to see you. Thank you for being here, and for all the ones that probably are online watching us. My first question is on page 397. You have on Parks and Trails, an increase from 2022 to 2022, from 2020 to 2022 of 2 million. Can, would you explain, please, what is this increase about?
I would have to double-check with Carrie. I believe it's positions that we held because of the pandemic, we didn't fill. Even though they were approved, we didn't fill them until '21. I think that's the majority of it.
Parks and Trails budget?
Yeah.
No, no. If you go to 397, on the High Lines budget changes, you will see in the expenditure budget by division, you will see Parks and Trails, and you have an increase from 2020 to 2022 of 2 million.
Eight positions. Those were the eight full-time positions. Council approved in 2020, then the pandemic hit, so we held off filling those positions until 2021.
And I have a couple of follow-up questions, but I'm gonna let other councilmembers to ask.
All right. Welcome back to you. Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not questions, but actually comments. One, I love the fact that we're doing something about cleanup. It's one of the biggest complaints that comes into my email box. It's just about the aesthetic look of the city, so I love that. And second, I love that we're using SEPTED. As someone who used to work in that area, I'm loving the fact that City Front is going to be using SEPTED on our projects.
Thank you. I'll quickly second his comments on SEPTED. So that was one of my notes as well, so I'll check that one off. Councilmember Halloran?
Yes, thank you. Kelly, I can't remember if our golf courts, carts are gas or electric?
They're gas.
When we do a fleet replacement, are we going to electric?
Well, we just did the fleet replacement. We have looked at electric, but we would have to retrofit the cart barn, which is a significant cost, and then, and then the cart cost on top of that. So at the time of replacements, the monies were not there to retrofit. We would have to do a study on what that would cost, and whether the cart barn was big enough to retrofit in what's needed for electric carts.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I'll jump in real quick, and as a follow-up on that, I'm gonna come back to you. Don't worry.
No, Councilmember Rivera.
I just wanted to really quickly jump in on the electric, because I had that same reaction, and not only on the golf course and carts, but as far as Parks Maintenance Equipment, knowing the legislature was considering a bill that was going to require that, if that's part of our planning process.
We're staying in touch with that. A lot of our manager, Steve Myers, specific to the golf course, and then also Steve Brown for Parks Maintenance, we're looking at the reality of that. If that's going to come, the cost to those specific divisions, and also it will follow to Public Works as well, to retrofit and be able to put those types of equipment in place. We may be going to a hybrid potentially, but we would have to take a look at what that would cost and how that could be funded, if that comes forward.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Kelly, for an amazing presentation. I appreciate it. Could you go into more detail with those new park and maintenance workers, and what exactly they'll be doing in terms of crime prevention through environmental design?
Sure. It's actually kind of a threefold of that. Obviously, SEPTED, which is the crime prevention portion, is, will be a big part of that in our parks. It also will be addressing the encampment removals a little more timely, if we could. And then also, the ride-away landscaped areas that are managed by our urban forester. All of those contracts continue to increase, and we're at, I think we're at 42, 45 contracts, and we should, by the end of 2023, increase by eight to 10 more contracts, so it's more areas to get out and manage those areas, along with the irrigation that goes along with it. So crime prevention, we'll be going through park by park and evaluating what needs or what we could do to help eliminate some of that activity, or at least deter some of that activity. We've done some work around the community center, like I mentioned. We also did some work around the senior center. We did some work around Piazza a couple of years ago, where we, actually, three years ago now. And so we will be going back into both Piazza and Gateway. Gateway is the small side pocket park across Logan Avenue. So we'll be limbing up trees, taking out shrubs, or lowering them down, finning them out. And what we'll do is then evaluate the types of activity that we have throughout our park system, trails included. So there's areas that obviously are more active than others, and that evaluation process will be taking place in early 2023. Actually, it's happening now, but as far as prioritizing moving forward.
I have a follow-up. How many employees do we currently have doing encampment or crime prevention through environmental design work?
Well, we have one employee with his partner, that, I mean, a work partner. We, they get assigned different times depending on their capacity. One that takes care of the homeless encampment identification and sites, you know, going out locating sites, and then seeing if they're active, not active, and then what we need to do with that. The crime prevention is pretty much just done as the Parks Team has time to do it right now. We've, when we saw some, some significant increase around the Renton Community Center, we sent the teams over there and addressed that. By having these new staff members along with our teams when they have capacity, it takes them away from their other maintenance jobs. So we want to make sure that we can focus on that, and then identify projects and priorities when, when the rest of the team also has. But these other three individuals will be able to help address some of those a little quicker.
Thank you.
Councilmember Halloran, you have follow-up on that question, and then I'll go to Councilmember Perez, unless there's a question on the end. Yeah, all right.
So with regard to SEPTED, can I assume that we're building this in as we're replacing the parks and the equipment and the landscaping? Thank you.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Now that we're talking about maintenance, let me, let's talk about maintenance. But I'm gonna go to a middle-level maintenance, not to the deep maintenance. I don't know how often we maintain the trails. I have never heard anybody complaining most of the time about the Cedar River and Jean Coolon Park. I mean, people think that it's well-maintained and well-clean, and, and kudos to whoever does it, but they're always doggy box, no matter where, where, they're always replacing them. However, the Spring Brook Trail, specifically the river, the Black River, I received a couple of emails, always about that, complaining about that area. And there's a guy with a machete that goes and cuts the overgrown vegetation over there. And the, the other complaint is that the garbage is not changed enough, that they're always full. And the one that we're very proud about, which is the Spring Brook Trail, where the boardwalk is, I wonder if there is, in the basic level maintenance, they, they spray wash that area. The boards right now very dirty, and I don't know for how long, and if it's included in this budget. But also, the other thing is that the maps that we have, I see that you, that you guys as a goal have in the 399, is another track trail. I'm assuming that you're gonna put a map. Those maps get very, very dirty, and they have mud. Literally, someone has to clean them. And the one that we put on the Cedar River, that is for children, normally don't have the pamphlets, but it's obviously they don't have it, because there's raining all the time, and it gets wet, and it gets a lot of trash in the process. But my follow-up is that if all of that maintenance that, that we need to provide to keep up with what, with what we have, it's already considered within this budget. Because my biggest concern is that I don't want to answer constituent and say, oh, it's dirty because we don't have money to clean it.
So I'll try, try to follow along, and I may ask for some clarification on that. So the Spring Brook Trail is contract maintained. Our crews do go in there once in a while, but it's, because we have sections of it, part of it goes across Boeing, and sections, like you mentioned, where the boardwalk is at. I will find out why that has not been addressed. Because it's over an environmentally sensitive area, I'm not sure that we can, we could probably pressure wash, but I would have to double-check on that, just to make sure. And then, I'm sorry.
And in the bench, there is even a graffiti already there.
Okay. Send the teams out there. Our, the Parks Maintenance Team will get out, not as frequently as they do a lot of our other parks, because of the, the use and activity that happened in the other parks. So they do get out there, along with our contract-maintained contractor. So we, I can find out the frequencies that they have been directed in those areas and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah. And as far as the track trails, we can look at a different holder, if you will, that maybe has a cover over it, so it's a different type of way to dispense the maps, just to help keep them from getting wet, or mossy, or dirty, or whatever. We can take a look at that.
Follow-up comment. Because it's a great idea, but if it's full of mud and dirty, just add to the, let's clean Renton rhetoric, right?
Yeah.
More to clean, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. I just want to make a comment, in terms of the more goals that you were mentioning earlier, to open, making it more accessible for the swimming lessons. So I want to thank that. I'll make note of it, and thank you for that. And then as far as staffing, I know there's always more that we can provide. But as of what you are proposing at this time, is that enough for your department? And if there is?
Well, similar answers, probably from the other administrators as well. This was, this is the start of the program. So as we get into it, identify priorities and workloads. If there is much more to continue, or we can broaden and expand through the rest of the city or programs, then we will be coming back to council and asking for additional help.
You have a few more?
Okay.
All right. And I will do a quick time check to make sure, because we still have two more to get through as well. I want to get through, but I don't want it to cut conversation short, because I know you got a list. So, Councilmember Perez?
I think we're done when we're done. But that's my humble opinion. In the Recreation Division, in page 3, 101, I have to say that I was a little bit disappointed that in many of the goals, it's nothing for the Don Person Senior Center activity. It's not that I'm reflecting myself or projecting myself, that I belong to that here age, but, but I would have liked to see something, because it's one of the headiest population that we have. So it's a budget for two years, and when I read all the goals back and forward, we really don't have anything there. I know that right now, we have the big project to install the new equipment on the back and all of that, but I would like to see always that, that facility and that population being seriously considered for, for new ideas or new goals to improve their lives, basically.
Thank you. Yes, we did note that, I believe in there, because of the Age Friendly Renton, that we'll be addressing a lot of the identified priorities or needs from the senior center, but we can definitely, we stress that all the time. Senior Center is very important, very popular. Not only who attend the senior center, people that we've mentioned before, that we would like to make sure that they're aware what we offer, and then needs that maybe we're not offering, that we need to address as well. So definitely a priority.
Thank you. And I think I have the floor, right?
Where's yours, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you. The museum. Liz, thank you so much for all the work that you do. It's amazing. I am always amazed that in the middle of the pandemic, at the end of the pandemic, you guys keep driving. I mean, I don't know how you guys do it, but I really want to thank you for your partnership with the Downtown Renton Partnership. That, that walking tour around downtown, your assistance was a success. Your, always, you guys, I don't know how you do it, but on social media, you're very active. And I really want to thank you, because your goals are right on, always. It's a treasure that we have. And particularly, my husband is very excited about the exhibition of the Aloha shorts. But other than that, I want to make sure that the museum is supported, Kelly, because as we know, the Renton History Museum runs a lot with, with a lot of grant money. And we always leave it for the other day and the next day, because we have so many priorities. And I think it's an important piece that we have to keep maintaining. Yeah. Okay.
Right. I actually have one more question, and then when, then we'll jump to, I was, I was saving it. I can't say how excited I am to see that the work is ready to commence on Cedar River Trail, Bank Stabilization. Is there a estimated start date yet, or is that I'm prematurely asking that question?
So we are in, I want to say 30% design, Colleen. Yes, we're a 30% design right now. We would, obviously, we have to hit fish windows as well. So I would estimate that we'd be starting late summer, into late summer.
My last question, I promise. I just have it at the bottom of my, my, the Renton River Days. So 2022, a lot of expectations and a lot of disappointments for a lot of members of the community, because of course, a lot of cities went full force with the, the whole thing. And right now, we try to experiment with different things, and, and the parade. And what are, what are the plans for the 2022, 2023, 2024? Are we gonna bring it full force? Are we budgeting for that? I know that these events are coordinated with volunteers, and the city kind of help them. What is gonna be the role of the city? What are we gonna do for these events that are so important for the mood of the community, especially during the summer? Are we thinking to bring more support towards them? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm.
Actually, perfect timing on the question. We actually have the retreat tomorrow with River Days. We have some, definitely heard from the community, good and bad, on how this last one went. We definitely had to, we had to pivot a little bit, because we weren't sure the time it takes to plan such large events like that. We had to be careful of what we were gonna offer, that we were able to do that. So we are definitely gonna be exploring that. We'll be coming to council in mid-November to provide an update and some asks for River Days. We'll be finalizing those tomorrow with the retreat.
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you very much, Kelly. Appreciate the presentation. Good questions. We have two left to get through. We can try to squeeze them in. I'm not sure if we'll make our time. I'm inclined, if court services would like to go first, if Chris is all right with us, so we see if our two judges are, or you, you all can decide which orders most fitting. All right. If court's ready, we can call them up. Oh, I, now I screwed it up with the, shouldn't have done that.
No, but it's good. It's good.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and I was gonna say, Honorable Mayor's not here with us right now, but we are obviously thrilled to be here twice in one year to address all of you. I am Judge Murphy Richards. Sitting behind me is Judge Janier. And we are both proud and honored to work with our Judicial Administrative Officer, sitting to my left, who's actually gonna be making our budget presentation tonight. So I will turn the flow over to Bonnie Woodrow, who is our Judicial Administrative Officer.
Good, I think it's good evening, maybe, Council, President and Councilmembers. I won't take up much of your time. The judges in August gave their State of the Court Address outlining the restorative justice programs that have commenced over the past year or so. So I'll get down to the numbers. For 2023, the court is requesting $3.395 million. For 2023, the court is requesting $3.395 million and for 2024, our budget request increases to 3.563. We are not proposing any additional FTEs and have not submitted any new budget decision packages for the biennium. Our mission statement hasn't changed that much over the years. However, we have added a vision to state our commitment to the procedural justice initiative. And that initiative includes four parts. One, being fair in process, being transparent in actions, providing opportunity for voice, and number four, being impartial in the decision making. So our vision, I won't read it to you, but it addresses all four of those components. This is our team. We are comprised of two elected officials, myself. Our department is divided into three divisions. OCSS is the Office formerly known as probation, our criminal division, and our infraction division. Both know the judges. We do lots of parties. We try and get together. We have a very robust and extensive telework and flex policy, so getting everyone together is a big deal. We support the City of Renton Business Plan in three ways. One, we help provide a safe, healthy, vibrant community, build an inclusive, informed city with equitable outcomes, and meet service demands and provide high quality customer service. Our four major accomplishments for 2021, 22, in the midst of COVID was commencement of Renton's first therapeutic court, our community court. We're very proud of our youth traffic court, Renton's first youth restorative justice model. We have also recently implemented weekly mental health calendars for a consistent and coordinated approach to a very complex issue. And during COVID, we expanded online public portals with e-filing and interactive forms. Our goals for the next two years, expand court programs to improve accessibility to court services, including therapeutic programs, increase availability and access to jail alternatives, implement procedural justice initiatives, and develop additional opportunities for community inclusion. Our challenges, we're still navigating our, the COVID, the COVID challenges that were presented for the, during the court, the two years. We, we went totally virtual in a matter of weeks and we are ramping back to a hybrid virtual and in-person hearing process. I'm sure that the judges went over that in their presentation. We're still navigating those, those challenges, getting people to appear for court. One of the other challenges is implementing increased language translation functions to court signs, court orders, handout, and instruction, instruction forms into more than just the top three Renton languages. We've also installed TV monitors in our lobby that will also have all of our forms and instructions in different languages. We're developing in-house options to increasing mental health, domestic violence, and to drug related charges. Do you have any questions?
I do not have questions. Which meant that you did an incredible job putting your budget together. I think that's a very sustainable and very well put together. I thank the three of you, but specifically Bonnie, you do an excellent job. Your presentation was awesome. I love the fact that you present the challenges. That is what I ask all the time because, you know, if we're foreseeing a future budget, we need to be able to address those firsthand. And, and thank you to the judges for the incredible job that you do down there. I highly appreciate all of your department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't, I don't have any questions. I just want to say this, in the day and age that we are in, you guys are getting it right. And I wanted to make sure that I give you guys the praise that you deserve publicly for getting it right the way that you guys are. It is one of the things that I'm most proud of in the city. It's the work that you guys are doing. You guys are absolutely getting this right.
Very much. That means a lot.
It does.
I will second that. Sorry, Mr. President. Didn't ask for permission.
Thank you.
Just really quickly and just two or three bullet points. How do you, how do you define success? I know it's not a budget question, but.
Can I, if I can, I was supposed to turn to you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give one and I'm gonna ask if Judge Janier wants to add one because we, we both kind of have our own programs that we preside over. And I think that we probably, although we see successes in one another's programs, I think we probably have a couple of things that we each feel most touched by. I will tell you that community court for me has been a real ripple effect to our mainstream calendar. So in community court, what success to me is someone saying to us, I've stayed out of trouble for six months, never stayed out of trouble for six months in my life. But that's not what I want to tell you, Judge Kara. I want to tell you that in my entire life. Here I go. Sorry, ladies. I've never had anybody say, you're worth anything until this program. I've never had anybody say, I can't wait to see you Thursday. I've never, never had anyone say, you can do this. Those things, although it's important to stay out of trouble, that's the goal of the program, right, is to prevent recidivism. The, the way that these participants are taking that same level of confidence to job interviews, to applying for jobs they would have never applied for before, those to me are successes. And I think I'm very, very honored that, I'm gonna say our first name, so I'm very honored to work with Jessica because the youth traffic program, the community court program, that's also how we talk to our mainstream litigants. We don't say, because you're not in therapeutic programs, we're not gonna talk to you that way. We still, we still provide the same encouragement. So I will tell you that all of our community court participants have stayed out of trouble, except for one. And even he still wants to come back and participate. So it's, it's people saying, I feel heard and I don't feel little and I feel important and I feel encouraged. And so can I turn it to you just with the youth traffic court? Because I think you're already finding lots of great success stories.
Absolutely. And I, I know I was told I could have one. I'm gonna share two, but the, the second one will be very quick. Absolutely. I think having the opportunity to empower young people to be engaged in our justice system is not only a gift, but I think it is one of the most successful and impactful things we can do for a variety of reasons. Number one, we're educating future drivers on our roads. It seems like a small thing, but we all share these roads in our community. We all want ourselves to be safe, our families to be safe, our friends and family and neighbors to be safe. And so education is a really big component about what, of what we're doing and the work that we're doing. But an equally big component to that is empowering our future generation of attorneys and judges. And oftentimes, we will have members of the youth court team look at me and say, Judge Janier, I think I am gonna go to law school. And my reply to them always is, that's great, and maybe after you're a lawyer for a while, you'll come be my colleague on the bench. And the look on their face to have a judge tell them, you're, you can be a judge someday too, it just really lights them up. And teaching young people to dream big and to be part of our process and to be part of our city and our community, I think that's a really big part of the success. I'm gonna share one more thing, but I promise it's really good, but it's really short. I think a big part of the work that we do too is balancing accountability and also a restorative approach. And procedural justice is a big part of the work that we do every day. And I would just like to share, I recently had an individual on one of my calendars and we get through this very long sentencing hearing and they were done and they had their paperwork and they were ready to go. And this was on our jail calendar. So this was somebody who was currently in custody and this was a very impactful moment for them. And he said, Judge, I know it's, I know my turn's done, but can I say one more thing to you? He said, absolutely. What would you like to share? He said, I never thought I would say this to a judge in jail, but the system's changing. The court is changing. He goes, I can't believe I'm here in Renton and that my hearing was held in the way that it was and that you listened to me and that I know what to do. I know what my next steps are. And I never thought I'd tell a judge this, but the system is changing. And I think those types of things are the ways that we really measure success. Thank you for letting me sneak into.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
All right. Unless there are any further questions, let's go to, say, say thank you to the court.
Thank you.
Yes. And we can, we'll hear from Executive Services to bring us home.
Yeah, and I think if we don't have enough time, we could always do questions at the next meeting too.
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Council President McErvin, all of council, very happy to be here. My first presentation in this seat, so I'm really excited to be sharing with you. I'm going to cover the executive department, which will include the mayor's office, and I'll go in more detail on the executive services department. I have my whole team here, so you'll be hearing from each one of them very quickly so that you can get to know them just a little bit as well as their great work. So moving into the mayor's office, obviously you know this guy. Mayor Paboni is our CEO and he is responsible for operationalizing your business plan. So getting the job done and will be, a lot of what you're hearing is just that work being realized. Has done quite a lot of work around legislative priorities, strengthening partnerships and collaborative relationships throughout the neighborhood, the region, or neighborhood, neighboring cities, excuse me, county, regional partners, all through a pandemic which had no playbook. And we're still working on stepping off and building off of our successes and lessons learned throughout that. And welcoming a lot of new businesses into the city all while, again, during a pandemic. So we've done pretty well. Also, creating two new departments, one of which is mine, and also the Equity Housing and Human, Human Services Department, which elevates programs that are very important to the business plan goals that you have stated. So more of the same in '23 and '24, really just operationalizing again your business plan goals, listening to any changes that you might make and making those happen among the administrators. Moving into the executive services department, it is made up of five different divisions, all of which were in different departments before we started. So we have been busy over the last year realigning our work, getting to know each other, and creating processes that allow us to collaborate much more effectively and efficiently, which, which was the purpose and goal. You will hear some great stories about that. A little bit about the budget. I wanted to thank Councilmember Perez for asking the question about the big bump in the 2022 numbers. That $5 million bump is really related to our Eden replacement, our financial replacement, the Axon body cameras, and several other IT initiatives that are big capital, big ticket items. And Young may speak to those a little bit in a minute, but that is the big bump there. So if you had a question about that, we can go into more detail. We have a few other additions which you'll hear throughout the presentation. As a team, we are here, we are an internal services department with a big external impact. With the exception of communications, we almost primarily support all the other city departments to do their work best, as best they can, and make them actually do better and think about how they can innovate and improve all their processes, procedures. And we do that collectively as a team best. Our metrics are going to be updated. You may have seen this. I don't expect you to be able to read that at all, but we will be updating these over the next year and Ryan actually will be speaking to that process, which all of you will be part of in the future. I am going to take a little bit of time to talk about our communications division. As you know, we are seeking to fill the communications director position actively right now. So right now you've got me. But we have a small and mighty team, which has done quite a lot over the last year as we have kind of had a year of discovery. What tools do we have? How are we using them? What do we need in terms of communications tools and also engagement? So all of you, or some of you have been part of either a communications assessment interview process or an engagement communication process. And we're going to be bringing that forward to you in November, the result of that project and action, and putting that into action next year. We have also done a lot of work around building interdepartmental teams to align all of the communications. Ultimately will be our goal that we have one voice as a city, but we have a lot of different voices in the city as far as what we, services we deliver and how we go about doing that. So we're working on getting everyone together on the same page. We will, in the coming '23, '24, implement a five-year strategic plan. So we have a communications strategic plan that will be robust and informed by the engagement assessment and the communications assessment that I just mentioned. We'll be working with IT, we'll be working with organizational development, really all of the city to make that what the city needs and to put Renton on the map as far as what a special place this is and making sure everybody knows about it. We will also be looking to data. So we'll be working again with IT and organizational development to use more data analytics to tell our story better and to give some meat to the bones of what we're doing. There's a lot of really, really good work that goes on in the city that's invisible. So we want to make sure everybody knows what we're up to and how it's getting done effectively. I'm gonna pass the torch to Young, who's going to cover very quickly the information and technology.
Hello, everyone. Speak softly, so I'll try to speak more clearly into the mic. In the name of time, I'll, I won't go over the accomplishments, but I'm sure you guys have a copy of the slides. For the goals for '23, '24, excuse me, we'll be working with a consultant to complete an IT, five-year IT strategic plan, which will guide IT's planning and implementation of the recommendations. This year, we completed a disaster recovery assessment with the assistance of emergency management and grant funding. And so hopefully, we will be starting in '23, implementation and planning work. Disaster recovery infrastructure basically replaces our entire network operations setup so that we can bring resiliency to the city services that rely on technology. We'll be expanding Wi-Fi coverage at all the recreation centers, including, including the Don Person Senior Activity Center. And then, excuse me, future Wi-Fi expansion will be headed to downtown core area and this is all using ARPU funds. We'll be working with finance to replace the enterprise resource planning system. It's called Eden. This will be a multi-year project that involves all departments. This will improve and align processes used by staff. This can include reporting, timekeeping, accounting, and this also includes an increased budget for a limited term project manager of $163,000. We're also working to enhance the city's ability to use data and direct services and support the community. I think we've heard a lot about dashboards and just data. So we'll be creating something called the data warehouse, which simplifies access for city staff to pull meaningful data from, clean, clean data. And I appreciate your time to highlight some of IT's goals. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. My name's Jason Seth. I'm your city clerk. The city clerk division acts as a third party, like a neutral third party and a conduit between the rent residence, staff, and council. Our mission is to encourage civic participation and education and create a culture of openness and transparency. We do this by managing the legislative process, managing the city's public records request process, providing physical and digital records administration, and managing the city's hearing examiner process. Major accomplishments, there we go, include the technological changes that we made to the chambers here today, as you can see today, and automating several key lines of business through our enterprise content management system, which is Laserfish, and training boards and commissions on Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act. Some of our goals include developing and implementing a five-year strategic plan. I think that's a pretty good indication of like our whole department, but we'd like to do that in the city clerk division too. Implementing at least one line of business in every department of Laserfish and improving the hearing examiner calendar process. And then, did I go too far? And then, as you can see in our budget proposal, we're asking for about $149,000. Of that, about $103,000 are, is the majority of that is increased election costs. The King County manages elections, they pass the cost on to the cities. And so every year that number has increased. This year, we're, for the next budget cycle, we're asking for about $103,000 more. The rest is to basically enhance our public records administration. So, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Ryan Spencer. I'm the Organizational Development Manager with Executive Services. Organizational development and performance is Organizational development and performance is really about focusing on engaging, empowering, educating and supporting staff across the organization to create that culture of continuous learning and empower the staff to have the tools and the knowledge embedded within each department to be able to make those process improvements and modifications to ultimately enhance the customer's experience. We believe retention really starts at recruitment and onboarding. Organizational development partners with HR and most all other departments to provide new employee orientations that communicate and demonstrate the amazing support and learning opportunities that come with being a city of Renton employee. Sorry. One of those examples is actually we currently have, did that go too far? Nope, nope, sorry. Is we have 23 staff currently enrolled in a lean belting program. And this is again to disperse those skills and knowledge throughout the organization for process improvement. This enables, you know, at all levels, the organization to really take their own processes and improve them on their own. Or modify and create the, the needed value with fewer resources in many cases. Another staff development related project that we have going or getting underway is providing workshops on equitable project management. So we have partnered with Benita and EHHS as well as human resources. And we're providing at the end of October, a training for a large portion of the staff for advancing racial equity in project selection, delivery and, or sorry, project selection, planning and delivery. This is being done strategically or intentionally because one of our opportunities in 2023 will be a project management course over covering the whole life cycle of project management. So we want this to be at the forefront of people's minds while they're going through that learning opportunity next year. Couple of other goals that we have for 23, 24. Coordinating with all city departments to perform, as you've heard earlier, a couple of times now, a revamp of the city's performance metrics. Using results-based accountability or RBA framework to best align them with the business plan. And really better reflect or gauge the quality of the effect of our efforts. Right now, a lot of it is, is excellent data, but it doesn't really tell the story. We're also underway with the process improvement endeavor regarding community or continuity of operations and information sharing in an emergency. Over the last few years and during a couple of emergency situations or even snowstorm events. We learned that the internal communications process could use a little bit of help. So partnering with colleagues in emergency management as well as other departments to really lean out this process. This should flow seamlessly into the external communications that many of us learned at the IEMC training recently. That communications is, is so important and often a gap that, that needs to be addressed. Kind of killing two birds with one stone or, or fun side note is we will be using 13 of our current green belt classmates in this process improvement after the first of the year to really give them the hands-on experience with a lean event such as this. Couple, or I guess the last one that you've also heard about is leading the efforts of conducting our first citywide community survey since 2017. So as Christie pointed out, that was queued up and ready to go at the beginning of 2020. And then the pandemic hit and as she noted, it wasn't a great time for a good year and a half to be asking people how they're doing. So we'll be working with all departments, organizational development will. And this will also tie into the performance metrics project that we're working on, making sure that we're asking the right questions. And getting the right data back to actually provide us the value to be able to, to see how we are doing. And again, how the effect of our efforts are playing out in the community. I'd like to thank human resources for the $30,000 transfer. This isn't new funding, but just leverage of existing funding from HR's budget to our budget to continue to help meet the goals of the training needs for the city. Thank you for your time and allowing me to, to share some of our highlights.
Hi, I am Deborah Niedem. I'm the emergency management director for the city. The whole purpose, the whole reason our team exists is that we are all about preparing our community to be more resilient and also getting our city teams to be as efficient and effective as possible in getting an emergency response and recovery out there to the community. We had a lot going on the last couple of years. We seem always to do that, but COVID sort of dominated the landscape. But in addition to that, we also had some weather-related emergencies, a transportation emergency. We did a lot of planning. This is the behind the scenes work that emergency management, it's, we're often invisible because we're doing all that planning at our desks and no one really sees it until it comes time for a response. So we've done a lot of that. Some of that will be ongoing in the next budget cycle because plans take a while to review. We also had two major exercises, which we were fortunate enough to have the mayor and three council members be able to join us in Emmitsburg for that. So thank you very much for the time that you spent in that. We are also going to be taking those lessons learned from that. We're not done yet. We still have the improvement plans to be writing, so that's going to be showing up in our work in the next two years. And then, of course, we still continue to be involved in bringing money into the city. So in addition to leveraging money to other departments and divisions from grant sources that we're able to tap into, we're also continuing to interact with the state and FEMA to get that $8 million back from the 2020 floods. So our goals in the 2023, 2024 period are we are going to relaunch and expand the Renton Emergency Preparedness Academy to include some virtual options. We, we basically killed it during COVID. We were not able to meet in person. Our entire model had been based on in-person and we were very focused on the COVID response at the time. So we are relaunching in January, so you can expect to see that coming out. This is a, just a collection of classes with safety and emergency preparedness topics. So people know to find it in one place. So they get it in our catalog and they also get it in the Renton Technical College catalog. So it's a partnership with them. We're also going to be renewing the city's storm ready designation, which we jumped through a few hoops for no cost. We get a designation and saying that we are storm ready. We will also be completing the comprehensive emergency management plan. That will be coming before council probably in October of next year. We've been working on it over the last two years, revising the sections of it and we'll be bringing it forward for adoption probably in October, if not. By November, I'm pretty sure. And then we are also going to be completing the revision and formal adoption of the continuity of operations plan. This is a plan that ironically we started in 2009 and has been in draft form ever since. It was prompted by ironically a pandemic at the time and we have continued to update and change it as we go. However, we've never really finally finished it. And so this is, this is the time period we're going to be bringing that across the finish line and incorporating all of the lessons learned that we've had from some of our own events in 2020 in particular. We also will be continuing to expand our capabilities with the emergency operations center, getting more staff trained and reducing the barrier to staff training will be, we think, taking it to an online platform delivery for training staff to be able to work in the EOC. Because we have found we've lost a lot of people over the last few months due to COVID and staff turnover. And so right now we are understaffed and we're under, we're undergoing tremendous recruitment effort to be able to get that staffed up again. So with that, I will pass it back to Christie.
Okay, so just an overview, there's a little bit of funding requests for each of, each of our divisions. One I failed to mention in the communication side was a position that will be addressing our website update. So we're looking for an FTE to basically be a webmaster and also increase capacity of our communications division. And all the others are listed there. I wonder if you have any questions for me or my team.
Going to ask if council members are willing to hold questions until the next meeting and even better, perhaps submit them in writing unless we want to go with a one quick one real quick from everyone, but I don't know if, if there's something you absolutely have to get out tonight, otherwise I would be very open to the suggestion of bringing it back next week if that's all right. All right. And again, I encourage you just, they, they have a whole week to research your questions, so.
Be very lengthy, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and pick up next week.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Say one thing close to German. I, I want to say to all of you, that was an excellent coverage of your watch, Macaulay. You resisted the urge to read every bullet point on the PowerPoint slide. Excellent, excellent, excellent. That's just one of my pet peeves. Good job.
Yes, thank you for being very, very efficient. We are adjourned.
I said, we tested. Every time.
Yeah, it's on now.
It's on?
Anyway, that's, part of it is, that's the longest meeting we've had.
No, yeah, that was a long meeting.
We keep, well, I mean, sometimes it's good. That's a HR function. Yeah, that's a HR function, although I didn't leave. I guess John gave me a compliment during his presentation. I don't know. Today's not the day. He had some compelling arguments to move. To, like, before he gets budgeted, honestly, because he doesn't want the airport manager to retire. No, those airports, I appreciate it. There's nothing, but some of them are too big, some of them are small. So I'm down to the floor here and leaving everybody out. But I need to talk to Kim. That's why I originally called him back. Not that much money difference. I was worried about changing my presentation, but now I have to. Well, and you give me your presentation, there's a point, I'm not worried about your presentation.
There's pizza in the conference room. Pizza, salad and breadsticks. So please come get food. Because there's a lot. It's for all of us. Next week, we've, we've got you covered next week too.
Now, maybe if you had a gray sweater with it, it would look more periwinkle.
Oh, I, you know.
When I interviewed to be a correction officer, I wore a gray suit with flowers underneath. And it looked periwinkle because it was gray.
Fair enough.
But black, it looked purple.
I am such, I think you must have looked in my wardrobe and like black, gray, white. And I think everybody thinks that I wear my own same. And I think everybody thinks that I wear my own same. I'm short, I'm weak.
Me? Oh, don't even get me started. I have the upstairs closet. I got downstairs. What the heck is going on? And I'm like, dude, you just look the other way.
I do have them and. I can't remember the app. Remember the app down there?
Oh, yeah.
So when they closed, I was like, wow.
Honestly, I have never been to Schrader. I like this. It's online.
The one that can see. Yes, I'm disagreeing.
So you said one at South Carolina, right? They closed during, over they closed all those shops.
It was like, oh my goodness, now what?
I mean, God forbid, I should try. I'm irregular.
You know.
That ship and sail. It's probably serious.
I'm a reporter, so.
You know. Over gummies.
Oh, is it?
Gummies. Everything makes my blood pressure go up. And I don't, my thyroid, my, I don't have a function to thyroid, so.
Yeah, it sounds like a parent. So I want to do surgery. Want to do it because you know, it's more than surgery.
Yeah.
And I have one.
So it's just a check.
Oh, and I want to get back. Do surgery. I do my work and that can lose me. If it doesn't work.
Yeah.
I wasn't just having those.
They don't have. I take all kinds of thyroidness, up, down, up, down.
And that's why I go down.
Ever since I was 30, that's when I had my youngest daughter. I always tell her, it's your fault. That was 30 years ago, but it's still your fault.
I didn't even record that because I said nothing bigger than mine thirty years. Every once in a while, I say this. I suppose. And they're like, back in the days, like when I was in my thirties, I could get away with it.
Yeah.
Oh, child? He's twenty something. They're like. You're probably gonna die. Go away. I'm like, so like this and then it stopped.
So we all. These are the things we want.
Can you say soon?
So.
How are you?
I haven't seen you in a long time.
I know. I know. I get to go upstairs very often. So you're doing well?
Yeah, yes.
I swear you never age. That's, that's, those are good genes. So is this our, our new mic system?
Yep.
I don't have to push anything, right?
You just talk.
Say your name and the city residents.
Yeah, that's for the.
Okay, so I don't have to do that? I haven't been back in here since 2019, so I want to make sure I try and do this correctly.
Right.
Well, I'm not gonna promise. I will get rid of the gum, though.
I'm like, huh.
Yeah, you gotta say. I'll, I'll.
No. And then I called her and I said, you know. I said, you know, I. Yes. Yeah. Well, I look at the presentation. That's right. As well, I should. Church, I pray myself. And building other things I have to do. Probably all. Sorry, no. You both. That's. Like you both are probably back. It's just like, because I was both saying. And. Oh, I know. I know. Because I was. The tax hall. Yeah.
It's too much.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and then they get, then they start me right away. For both of them. It's awesome. It's a, it's a. So. But it's all. Just the comments that we. So they're not. Not every. So that's. Always. Always. Exactly. I would have felt, then I'll, I'll come in. Which I have to share. Yes, yes, I can. Side, side. I can't even. I told you. I have to say. So.
Okay.
I have to do new things. But it's fine. I like.
Right.
Nobody. I have to like. There's a, there's a lot just.
Mine's kind of nice. I feel like mine. Try to.
I don't know. Yeah, we're single. With. Long. It just, it's. I'm here, but I'm just like. I'm just. I'm just. That's all. You're enjoying. Okay.
You like.
I don't know. Oh. I just. I do a little amount, I have some, but then I don't want to get up there.
You know, we should. Well, no. My gosh.
Well, and.
It's not. Go ahead and tell Larry that I'm dinner. No. I'm like. I'm gonna take it from what you want. So. That's nice. But. I have a lot of things. I was like, the ranch is not the same as the. So. Okay, I read it to anybody. Yeah, we love it. How do we do it? Well, they're sour. I like the sour. Just. Just. Perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Like stuff.
Oh, I'm just.
I'm just.
Yeah. Um. I'm like. I just. I don't like. I don't. I just.
Enjoy it. Will you enjoy it?
He did. Have a drink after.
Let me.
That's what I meant to do. I'm like, fuck my.
I'm not keeping you. Leave their phones. Oh. Charge. We still. We still. She's. How's it doing?
My.
I don't sleep earlier tonight.
I don't have a real. I mean.
I wouldn't. I wish I did. I looked for one there. I've eaten them all. I am definitely.
Oh, there, I just found mine. But thank you, Kim.
Do it in small.
I just wanted to print.
Come on. Yeah.
Need you to.
Yep. I, I can give you. Look at you. I want to do that.